Okay, I've been informed that due to Fire Marshal regulations, we cannot have people standing in the back or in the aisle. That if there are no more seats, then we do have monitors with sound out in the hallway, so that if there are no seats, you cannot stand in the back or in the aisle way. But you're more than welcome to stand outside in the hallway and observe the board meeting from the monitors outside, please. Okay, due to the large number of public testimony speakers, we will ask that you please, so that we can hear from everybody, please limit your comments to one minute. Okay, please come forward in any order and speak at the podium. Okay, welcome. Let's begin today's meeting and hear the public testimony on non-agenda items. Each speaker will have up to one minute to address the board. And please remember, no deferral of time is allowed, so that we can hear from all speakers. When you begin speaking, the green light will come on, a yellow light when you have one minute left, and when your time is up, the red light will appear and a bell will ring. Please finish your sentence when your time is up. Gila Elavilla, Lisa Berlanga, Sean Caraffin, and Penny Adler.
Hello, my name is Penny Adler. I'm the Chair of the Education Committee for the League of Women Voters. I'm very pleased today to introduce a new coalition called CLEAR. CLEAR's mission is, through transparency and community involvement, to support the county's school districts in implementing measurable strategies that improve student's success and close the achievement gap. It is important to highlight that CLEAR is a regional organization focused on all 42 districts countywide. The League is pleased to be a member of CLEAR because we know the importance of joining forces with diverse groups to promote transparency and accountability and to encourage the active participation of the public. We applaud the district for its recognition this year as a finalist for the broad prize acknowledging its progress towards closing this achievement gap. We now are very optimistic. Thank you, we look forward to supporting your efforts to do this.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sean Caraffin. I'm with the San Diego County Taxpayers Association, and I want to introduce myself. And I'm here not only for the Taxpayers Association, but also on behalf of CLEAR, the Coalition for Local Education Through the Accountability of Resources. I want to make sure it's very clear that we're here to support the district. This is all about community involvement, because we understand that the district cannot be successful without the community, and we're here to try and help. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, President, Advisor, Board Member, Superintendent Martin, Lisa Berlanga, with United Parents for Education. We too are a coalition member, and I'm very pleased to be here. The reason we started the coalition was so that we can engage our communities together. We have parents here, Up For Ed parents, that are here and they want to engage in the LCFF process, and you'll hear from a few of them, it's a complicated process. And there's lots of opportunity for information. The coalition members want to work with the district to get out information to our constituencies. We work with parents, San Diego Taxpayers has their constituency, the PTA works with parents, so we have lots of folks helping to get this information out. So what we're asking from the district is that there's transparency. Transparency in the funding, how much funding comes in, where does it go? Transparency in the data, we want to see results. So we've asked for a few metrics in our recommendations, and we're going to again ask for these countywide, so that we can see how all the districts in the county are doing, and again, how we can help and support. Nothing in our recommendations is new information, this is all stuff the district is either required to do under LCFF, or data that you're already collecting. We're just asking that it be made transparent, so that members can meaningfully engage in the decision-making and planning processes with LCFF. And I have copies for everybody. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Gila, I represent 109 employees and their families at Green Horizons Landscape. We're at a loss at where to go with our issue involving the San Diego Unified School District and its recently dismantled Labor Compliance Department. We're a local business in Escondido, we've been here since 1986, and several years ago, we contracted with the school district to complete a landscape project. Two years later, we still have not received our monies from the school district, a total of over $165,000. Over the past couple of years, we've received numerous audits from the school district that conflict with one another. We have responded to these audits on many, many occasions, and have no result. We are in need of our money. As a result of the district's failure to pay our contract, we have been severely affected in our cash flow. We have had to reduce employee wages, we have had to terminate employees, and we are in a situation where our relationships with our vendors have been damaged. We request humbly for the district's assistance in helping us to please get closure and ultimately payment in full on our projects.
Thank you. I'd like to refer that item to staff. Derby Patengill, Amelia Cast, Leilo Valesco, Alejandra Martinez, please come forward and speak in any order at the podium.
Hola, mi nombre es Eduardo Velasco, padre de dos hijos, uno en kindergarten y uno en segundo año.
Hello, my name is Eduardo Velasco. I have two children, one in second grade and the other one in kindergarten. My question is, how is the district going to guarantee that the schools will effectively or adequately disburse the funds of LCFF? Or how, or in what way are you going to teach the parents on how to know what to do with these funds, or how to distribute these funds? Or will you simply just distribute the funds and everyone spends the funds any way they please? Who's in charge of monitoring the funds? Or how do you know that? Or how do you know that the monies that are being spent in the most, or how do you know that these monies are being spent in the, in the worst or biggest necessities that each school has?
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es María del Rosario Quebrado, y soy mamá de Sherman Elementary y de KIP. Estoy feliz de estar aquí porque tengo la oportunidad de exponer algo que nos preocupa a muchos como padres. Nuestros estudiantes están llegando hasta quinto grado y no están siendo reclasificados, y lo estamos viendo, qué pasa esto año tras año.
Good evening, my name is María del Rosario Quebrado, and I'm a Sherman mom and a KIP mom. I'm very happy to be here because I have the opportunity of exposing something, or letting you know about something that concerns us very much as parents. Our students are getting up to fifth grade, and they're not being reclassified, and we are seeing that this is happening year after year. Now, with the LCFF funds, one of the groups of priority is the children that are learning English. I hope that with these funds, you really give these resources to support our students and so that they can be reclassified. I'd like to know...
Me gustaría la toma de decisiones de cómo van a gastar este dinero para el beneficio de nuestros estudiantes, especialmente los que están aprendiendo inglés. ¿Cómo van a usar estos fondos para asegurarnos que esto no siga pasando en nuestras escuelas? Esto ha pasado por muchos años en la comunidad.
Are parents going to be involved in the making of decision-making?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lourdes Garcia. I'm a parent of Horton Elementary and Bell Middle School. I'm here tonight because I have a question and concerns like other parents have. First of all, many parents still don't know what LCFF means, because in the schools, they don't have much information, and they have been informed a lot. So I wonder how LCFF is going to be monitored, and who is monitoring the funds now? How can parents really see how the schools are benefiting from these funds? And how will participate in the decisions of the use of these funds? We need to be involved in all of this. I would also like to see how my child is going to benefiting from these funds. How will, how will you know what you're doing is working for my child? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Board Members. My name is Amelia Castillo. I'm a parent of Eduardo and Xavier Velasco at Horton Elementary. As an active and engaged parent, I feel that to fully account for LCFF, we need to have empowered parents at every school site. Being that one of the A priorities is parent involve engagement, I hold the district accountable for engaging and empowering parents. LCAP is the check and balance of LCFF, the transparency and allocation of funds. I want to be able to follow the funds and know where they are spent. I thank all nonprofit organizations like Up For Ed, PTA, for keeping parents involved, fully engaged, and empowered. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Derby Patengill. I'm the President of the San Diego Unified Council of PTAs. I'm here tonight representing the Ninth District PTA, which oversees San Diego and Imperial Counties PTAs. The PTA has been advocating on behalf of children and families for over 100 years. We've worked hard to establish child labor laws, kindergartens, and hot lunches, and that's just a few of the endeavors. I say this because the PTA is ready to do the hard work, and we are able to do the hard work. That's why we've been actively involved at the state and local levels, educating parents and communities, and advocating for the fair implementation of LCFF and LCAP. It is in the spirit of positive collaboration that the Ninth District PTA voted to join the CLEAR coalition. As an organization, the PTA does not necessarily agree with all of our fellow coalition members on all issues, but we do all agree upon, is listed here in these recommendations and commitments. Nothing is written here that was not approved by all of its constituents. Yes, that makes for slow progress, but it makes for thoughtful progress. Thank you. We look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, sir. Lance Renn, Sabrina Hanline, Rob Wilber, Sylvia Alvarez, Michael Briet, Dennis Cornell.
All right, Mr. Barnett. Sylvia Alvarez, Chapter President, OTBS. Currently, the district's proposal has all classified employees moving to one fully-paid health benefit plan. It is important, actually it is vital, to keep health benefits intact, because it will ensure the retention and recruitment of employees as our salaries are below the state wage. It's important for those of you maybe that don't know, to realize that we have foregone raises in the past, all three units, to keep our benefits intact. We have sacrificed and come to the table when you needed us to. So we feel now this is an unfair proposal. We also would like to ask that you empower the Health and Welfare Committee with the authority to make more decisions. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Sabrina Hanline. I'm the Para-Educator President for CSEA Chapter 759. I'm also here to speak to the fact that the district is not bringing to our table any increase in salary over the next three years. All three units, as Sylvia spoke to, have not received a salary increase since 2007, and in fact, we've foregone salary increases. In my unit alone, I have 2,700 members. Only 173 of them work eight hours a day. And a majority of them don't even work three, over three and a half, which means they're not even benefited. It's time, just recently in the media, there was an article regarding the median wage in San Diego to own a home, which is about $82,000. I don't think any of us here, even if we were partnered as a couple, are bringing in that type of income. We need to support our employees so that we can support our students. Thank you.
My name is Lance Renn, President of the CSEA Operations Support Services, Chapter 724. San Diego Unified's current proposals are all about taking away choices. Taking away choices for parents and students, reductions in transportation, and choices for our membership regarding healthcare. As many of you know, my wife is very ill, and taking away choices of healthcare providers for my family could mean compromising her level of care. My family under the district's current proposal may have to choose between my wife's healthcare and paying our bills. And this is not only for my family, it's for many families that I represent. The district's most recent proposal to the OSS unit reduces by 38% the current staffing levels for transportation guaranteed in the contract. This proposal is viewed as a precursor of a district desire to contract out transportation, taking away school choice for parents and students. It would be unfair, through cuts in transportation, to take away parents' ability to have a choice of where their children go to school. Thank you.
Good evening, President, Advisor, Superintendent Martin, members of the board. My name is Rob Wilber, and I'm the Labor Relations Representative for the Para-Educator Unit, CSEA Chapter 759. The district's proposal to offer only one fully-paid family medical plan would cause tremendous disruption to the continuity of care for those families who have chronically severe medical issues. Imagine the devastating impact to a family that for years has been treated by the same primary care physician or specialist. They depend on that doctor being intimately familiar with their medical condition. Under the district's proposal, they may be forced to switch doctors or medical facilities that are not within the network option offered by the district. Physical infirmity is but one aspect of medical care. Many families have psychological problems requiring intensive treatment. It is paramount these individuals maintain the level of trust they have developed with their treating providers. I implore you to direct the district bargaining team to withdraw the health and welfare proposal. Thank you.
Good early evening. My name is Michael Briet, and these are my friends. I'm the new lead negotiator for the CSEA Coordinated Bargaining Team. We're not here to cause trouble, we're not here to cause problems, and we're not here to disrupt your meeting. We're here to ask you to partner with us, and ask your district team to make movement as it relates to the healthcare proposals that are currently on the table. CSEA believes its proposals are fair and would withstand public scrutiny, and we're willing to put them out there as such, and we're willing to invite the board to attend the bargaining sessions within the confines of Brown Act as such. And what we ask is that the board direct its bargaining team to make a fair, common-sense proposal, as CSEA has, as it relates to the health and welfare plan. CSEA has put a proposal to forego wage increases to maintain status quo on health benefits. Up to this point, that has been rejected. We implore you to ask your team to withdraw. Thank you.
Good evening, President, Advisor, Board of Education Members, and Superintendent Martin. I am Donna Cornell, President of the Administrators Association, also known as AASD. I stand here not only in solidarity with CSEA, but on behalf of AASD's bargaining unit of classified managers and supervisors who have been in negotiations with the district since last May. AASD is deeply disappointed in the district's proposal to significantly reduce our benefits by proposing to pay for only one medical plan. This is a bad business practice that encourages adverse selection, will escalate benefits costs, will destabilize continuity of care for your employees, and is the wrong way to reduce the cost of benefits. AASD and all other employee groups have proven a willingness to partner with the district to keep healthcare costs low, and have often sacrificed salary increases to pay for benefits enhancements. On behalf of the members of AASD, we respectfully urge you to direct your negotiators to withdraw this damaging and unfair proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Krug, Francine Maxwell, Julie Jenkins, Linda Kleiner, Bill Freeman, please come forward and speak in any order.
I am Michelle Krug. Thank you for your time. I'm actually speaking on a different issue. I'm part of the Disability Committee for the Register of Voters, the Community Disability Committee. And what I'm asking is for consideration of maybe more of a blanket partnership with the register of voters when it comes to having the schools used for voting facilities. We went from 49% accessible to 60%, which is a great jump of accessible facilities, but we still need to go further. That still means 40% of our voting facilities are not accessible. And given that we have a school in every area, and I know many of the schools do participate, I just would love to see some kind of a partnership. I'm asking this of the city of San Diego as well, in terms of the libraries and park and rec. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Lynn Kleiner. I'm a site tech at Stanley Middle School and a proud member of this district. Let me tell you a little bit about my life for the past five years with this district. I am speaking for at least half the people in this room, because they had the same problem I did. I was here two years ago when the big layoff had happened. From that point, I have not been hired back until now. It's very difficult to work two years as a temp employee and be able to make your bills paid, to be able to live, and now, there are several site techs that have an eight-hour position, a 16-hour position, some 20. I happen to have a 30 for the first time in two years. I worked for you for five years, I've worked very hard, I'm a good employee, I want to work for you. Please don't take away our benefits.
Good evening. I'm Bill Freeman, President of San Diego Education Association. I'm here in support of CSEA and the Administrators Association. They are our educational family. As all of us know, without the educational team, our schools could not function as efficiently as they do. We're all responsible for ensuring that our students receive the best possible education and the best possible environment. This holds true from janitors to bus drivers to secretary, and we could go on. As I told the members of the Alpine Board yesterday, we have other responsibilities other than working with students. We all have families to support. I wish I could stand here and tell you that all of our family members would always be in good health, but you and I both know that not to be true. I wish I could stand here and tell you that we would never need a raise to make ends meet. We also know that that isn't true. What I can tell you is that our employees must depend on us and the comfort that we provide by knowing that they have fully funded healthcare, capable of taking care of their family, and sufficient wages to make ends meet. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Francine Maxwell, I passed out a copy of a lesson that was passed to students at Lincoln High School from an excess teacher that the board trustees, one employee, made Lincoln take back. Setting high expectations for all students are key to closing the achievement gap. When children on the other side of eighth are not getting to watch a movie and fill in the blanks like middle school children do on a high school campus, obviously, that's going to preclude closing the achievement gap, because the expectation has not been set high. When my area superintendent walks into several classrooms and she sees that they are using the textbooks, and she applauds them using the textbook, in January, they're on chapter three. So that tells you that the over expensive textbooks are not being utilized the way that they should be, and my area superintendent, she must not have a high expectation, because she was impressed that they were even using the textbook, and they were on chapter three. That's deplorable. So I ask you once again to look at what the definition of your expectations are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Julie Jenkins. I am the President of the Claremont Cluster, we're the Claremont Community of Schools, and I came tonight just to share with you a little bit of work that we're doing to reach out to our neighborhood preschools. Two years ago, we really made it a priority to reach out, and we've been invited to a local preschool to, the first time I appeared on a panel presentation, and they invited us back to have two principals, and we've really been able to draw some neighborhood families because of that. The neighborhood families were really impressed that the principals were there. And after that, we had a parent volunteer to hand out some flyers to the local preschools so that they knew when the open houses were. And the principals have been really responsive and really good about reaching out to our community. So our next step now is to distribute a survey at our neighborhood preschools to get feedback on where the parents intend to send their children, and also what they might want to know about our neighborhood schools in order to raise the enrollment of our neighborhood schools. So we're really excited about what we're doing in our cluster, and we wanted to share that with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins. Elizabeth Nagy, Katie Anderson, Blanca Vega, Dr. Michael McQuary.
Hi, I'm a mother of two now, and the district ones at junior college now. I was just wanting to...
Please state your name for the record.
I'm sorry. My name is Elizabeth Nagy, mother of two, Silvergate, Point Loma High. I wanted to just comment on last night's meeting at the cluster meeting. It was very well attended at Mission Bay. I'm thankful for the opportunity to participate, but I was wondering if we're having the meeting, are we using that information not only for the big idea, but are we also using that to evaluate our progress for the LCAP? And if we are, I would just ask that it be very clear and transparent to parents, the eight areas that we're looking for information on and feedback on, so that they know what to expect. And I know some of the parent groups that I represent, we will have that big idea, we will come forward with big ideas, because that's very exciting in those three areas that you mentioned yesterday, as well as looking at how we've done over the past year and our recommendations for the future both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Katie Anderson. I've got my parent hat on, and I wanted to just talk a little bit about the forums that we're having. And I want to use the kind of format that you guys are doing, which is what's going well, and I want to... And I appreciate that we're having these forums, and they're so well advertised, that's great. Going to Needs Work. I think it's important that there be some inclusion of the LCFF and LCAP conversation, those eight points that the state is handing down. I know there's some overlap with our 12 indicators, but four of those eight from the state are student centric, and I think it's important to remind folks at those meetings that that's important. And I also wanted to... Then the third thing is how can we work together? And that would be to give us a chance to understand the LCAP process that the district is using. So in the 2020 Vision Forums, LCAP is not mentioned at all, and as I understand it, that this is how we're fulfilling this requirement for the state. So, thank you.
Thank you. Points very well taken. President Beiser, members of the school board, Superintendent Martin, community, school employees. My name is Dr. Michael McQuary. My short name is Dr. Mike, and I'm here to declare my candidacy for District C of the San Diego Unified School District. I am declaring my candidacy because I think we need a conversation. I think we need a debate. I think the issues need to be discussed and clarified. Without having an opposition candidate, there cannot be a debate. There cannot be a discussion, and there cannot be clarification. So I am here to support and to make that discussion happen.
Good evening. My name is Blanca Vega, and I'm just a regular employee. I work for ACDC, and I want to let you know that we are the feet. We're holding the whole body. I want you tonight, before you go home, to keep this in mind. We have to make a living just like everybody else. We have a lot of responsibility. In having Head Start and other programs integrating to our schools, we have more work, double the shift, like some of them say. The exception is we're not getting paid good enough. We're getting cut every year. The same people get cut. I would like you to probably think about looking at somewhere else, another area, probably top instead of cutting the feet. I want you to be in my shoes. What can you do with $1,700 a month with that rent so high, the bill so high, and we still have to perform? Thank you.
Mr. President, is that the end of public testimony?
Yeah.
I'd like to ask my colleagues on the board. We've had hundreds... Well, after Ms. Smith then...
Did you... I'm sorry. Ma'am, did you submit a form?
I did.
Okay.
I did.
I didn't see... Okay. Citizen, please come forward.
I did. I submitted a form.
I don't doubt that at all. I apologize. We must have made a mistake.
My concern is about this celebration at Moore School that has been scheduled for May 3rd. I have a lot of questions about where that came from. I spoke with Joanne Fields about it, and she was going to meet with me, but that meeting didn't happen. I left her a message, and she was going to explain it to me, but she didn't return my calls. I left a message for Mrs. Foster, and today she said to me that this celebration on May 3rd is going to be funded by fundraising. And I've got a big concern because it's going to take a lot of overtime for custodians and police officers for this eight-hour event that staff didn't have planned, and it wasn't budgeted. And you just don't go out and fundraise because you want money for a party. We have kids that need instruments. We have lots of needs in this school district. You're listening to your employees tell you right now, there isn't even money for them to have a raise, but there's money to have a party? If you're going to fundraise, then fundraise for something valuable, something that will benefit our kids directly, not another party. You had that with your Welcome Back event, and that was expensive as well.
That completes the non-agenda public testimony. Thank you all for taking the time to speak to the board and...
Mr. President, forgive me. I'd like to... I was starting to make a comment before, and I'd like to ask, given we've had hundreds of employees out expressing legitimate concerns about their healthcare, and I know all of us have serious concerns about this, I also know that we've had discussions in closed session, which we're not allowed to discuss in public. It's illegal for us to discuss what we discuss in closed session. I want this board, I'm asking this board, demanding this board, set an item for the next future agenda where we can have an open, public discussion of what the healthcare is, what we're talking about for options for staff, so we can have an open discussion so all employees can hear our views in public. I've stated my views publicly to your colleagues. I'll be happy to state them to you in meetings, but we as a board should have an open discussion of these issues, and I'm hoping my colleagues will agree instead of simply having closed-door meetings. As the one gentleman mentioned, that we set this for a public agenda for the public to be a come-down, participate, and see what it is that we think we can afford and what our employees deserve. So I would request that this be placed on the next future agenda, and I'd hope my colleagues would support that approach.
That completes the non-agenda public testimony. Thank you all for taking time to speak to the board and superintendent today. We appreciate your comments and know that your input helps us to better serve our students and make better decisions. At this point in time, the Navy JRO T.C. color guard from Serra High School will now present the colors. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, that's not in the script, but, you know. Go conquistadores. Okay. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast at home and call the February 25, 2014 regular meeting to order with all board members present. If you wish to address the board today, and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium, and you have not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Cheryl Ward, the board action officer. Speakers on agenda items will be called to speak on the item during the discussion of that agenda item. Once the discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted by the board. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 and will be also heard at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like the ASB student representatives to the board to introduce themselves. Please tell us about yourself and what's going on at your school, both academically and socially. ASB Council President, Michaela Volk from SCPA, and ASB Council Sergeant at Arms, Brandon Ty, Crawford High School. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hello. My name is Michaela, and I go to San Diego School Creative and Performing Arts. First, we have exciting news. We have a Young Arts winner for 2014 in visual arts, and her name is Samantha Allard. She was one of 700 winners out of 10,000 applicants. And so she won for her art... Yes. She's a visual art major, so she won for her art. And then last week, we had Bring Your Parents to School Day, and if the parents got bored with us in class, they got to go to workshops. So we had Common Core workshops in math and English, and then they had training with Naviance and Power School. Also tomorrow, we're having a screening for 20 Feet from Stardom, and this is in partnership with the Museum of Photographic Arts. This documentary is also being nominated for the 2014 Oscars, so we're going to have that at our school, and before it begins, our students will perform. And also, you should definitely check out our production right now called The Hot Mikado. It's a comedy based on Gilbert and Sullivan's Mikado, and it includes music from Cab Calloway, the blues, gospel, jazz, and magical music. And performances are February 27 at 2:30, Friday, February 28, Thursday, March 6, March 7, and March 8. And you can find that on our website. That's what's going on at SCPA.
Thank you, Michaela.
Hello. Representative from Crawford High School. Currently, last Sunday, we actually had our wrestling team go towards the CIF tournament. We had three athletes that made it to the semifinals, and we had one that actually completed the whole thing and won in his weight division, I believe 195, and his name is Courtney Roberts. Also, currently, we have four out of five sports that made it to playoffs, and actually today is girls' basketball and girls' soccer playoffs, and tomorrow would be the boys' soccer. We also started something new at Crawford to boost the spirit at our school, and it's something called the Coats Corral. That's something like, if you guys are familiar with the Seahawks, the 12th man, we basically close off a section just for students only, and then we give them like props and stuff to wear for the game, so that's pretty fun. And we're also preparing for the Wash visit, March 23 to March 26. And we're also pushing towards Sadie's Dance like SCPA, so yeah, that's what's going on at Crawford. Thank you.
I forgot to mention something really important. My principal, Mrs. Azadiga, is here, and she's going to be part of the student presentation along with one of our students, Kimmy Parker.
I want to ask Michaela a question. This Bring a Parent to School Day, is this common across all schools? Because I'm sure my teenager neglected to mention me coming to school with her. Is that something that your school has been doing for years?
Yes.
Oh.
My dad has attended too.
And remind everybody what grades your school is.
So SCPA is from 6th through 12th grade, so it includes middle school and high school, and we have about 1,500 kids.
Great. Thank you very much, Michaela and Brandon. At this point in time, we have student presentation, a celebration of Black History Month with Porter Elementary School, Knox Middle, SCPA, Lincoln High School. And I think to introduce trustee Marnie, or Vice President Marnie Foster.
Well, the way that I'm going to introduce is just that I am very proud of District E representation tonight, introducing and celebrating, and I did say celebrating, African-American History Month. So without any further ado, let's have the celebration begin.
My name is Lilly MacMillan. I'm the principal, the proud principal at Porter Elementary School, and tonight I'm going to put into practice 65/35, and that is 35% of the time the student voice will be heard and 35% of the time my voice. And I'm doing my 35% at this moment. So at this point in time, I would like to introduce to you one of our proud students from Porter Elementary, who will at this time introduce himself.
Good afternoon, Board President, Mr. Beiser, Vice President, Mrs. Foster, the senior's board members, staff of the San Diego Unified School District, and community members. I am Edman Nives, a fourth grader at Porter Elementary. I am honored to share with everyone today why Black History is important to me. Black History is important to me for many reasons. First of all, I think of all the African-Americans that not only paved the way so I can have equal rights, but also that I can have equal opportunities. I now have the opportunity to attend any university I select because many sacrificed their life to make this happen. Margaret Edwards was not allowed to attend the University of Mississippi. However, he fought to end discrimination into the admittance of all white universities. It is because of him and many others I now can say I will go to any university of my own choice. Also, I had the opportunity last week to visit the Rattles exhibit at Porter. I viewed a movie that shared the story of the Tuskegee Airmen. I learned from the Tuskegee Airmen that if you want something bad enough, you must be willing to sacrifice. They were treated extremely harsh. They could not eat with the other soldiers. They were protecting, and after the war, they did not have the same benefits of the other soldiers. One of the Tuskegee Airmen spent four years at West Point, and no one talked to him or shared a room with him for four years. He did not let this affect him. I learned from the Tuskegee Airmen that you must work harder and not allow those who discriminate against you influence your future. Another reason why Black History is important to me is because I can celebrate me. I can celebrate who I am and not be ashamed, and not feel ashamed. I can celebrate the richness of Black History. There were so many firsts that I can celebrate, not only during February, but throughout the year and a lifetime. The first of many includes Madame C.J. Walker, who invented a hair-growing lotion. Walker grew up very poor, but she did not... She became the first African-American millionaire. Barack Obama became the first president of the Harvard Law Review, and now the first African-American president of the United States of America. Thurgood Marshall, the first U.S. Supreme Court Justice, Ralph D. Bush, Nobel Peace Prize winner. The first general was Benjamin O. Davis. Sir, 1942-1948, inventors of the blood bank was Dr. Charles Drew. Mae Jackson, 1992, became the first female astronaut. There are so many firsts to talk about, and through them, we continue to have the opportunity to become the first. I'll leave you with a quote from Booker T. Washington. "Success is to be measured, not by the position that one has reached in life, as by the obstacles which he has overcome while trying to succeed." Celebrating Black History lets me know no African-Americans have succeeded and will continue to succeed because they have not allowed obstacles to hinder their dreams. This is why I celebrate and live Black History. Thank you for your attention.
I want you to know that Edman was selected to speak at the Tuskegee Airmen's exposition but did not have an opportunity to do so. And at the last minute, the young man that was supposed to speak could not come, had another agenda item. So as of yesterday, he went to his teacher and said, "I need to speak at the board for Mrs. MacMillan and Dr. Wilson." So he... And he came and told me today... So he, and he came and told me today, "I wrote my speech, but my teacher helped me to get it together. Can you look at it now and help me make sure I got it right?" So I have to say, tonight, you heard Edmund's voice with a little, uh, support from his, uh, coaches. And we are so proud that he, uh, he is an example of our future for African American history. Thank you.
This is not the time to be shy. So, um, the representative from, um, Lincoln or the School of Creative Performing Arts, are you ready? Okay. I'll let you, uh, have the pleasure of introducing.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Estelmo Baye, Lead Principal, Lincoln High School. And with me this evening is my team, um, Ms. Maria Cristo de Lulu, Head of Department of our Theater Arts Program. She'll be introducing the students.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Um, thank you so much for allowing this time for students to showcase their talents. Um, it's been an honor working at Lincoln, and I truly enjoy my job. Um, not only am I the theater director for Lincoln High School, but I also teach college career technical education, um, which is very strong at Lincoln. And I'm also the Vice President of the San Diego Shakespeare Society. And I would like to extend, um, to any of the board members, if they'd like to open up for our festival, which is on May 3rd in Balboa Park. I'm gonna be emailing you about that. Um, but what we're gonna be doing today, we wanted to do something in celebration of all people. So we have two monologues that are Shakespearean. And then we also have, um, a skit from a play, which is Chinese as well. Um, and so, um, the students who are performing today, we have Ivan, Caesar, um, oh my God, I'm gonna forget your name, and I've known you since 7th grade, Sean Brainfar, and Enrique. So I'll give it over to these guys. Thank you.
Oh, pardon me, thou bleating pizza bread, that I need to be gentle with these butchers. Thou art the ruins of the noblest man that ever lived in the tight of ties. Woe to the hand that shed this costly blood. Over thy wounds now who I pop aside, which I dumb mouth, too old to relive, too baked for the voice and utterance of my tongue. Bakers shall lie upon the limbs of these men. Be a civil strife and the rest of fury shall conquer all the parts of Italy. Blood and destruction shall be so in use, and dreadful objects so common, that mothers shall but smile when they behold their infants ordered by the hands of war. All pity chok by foul deeds, and with Caesar's spirit raging, work for revenge, but Atti by her side, come hark from hell, shall in these confines, and with a monarch's voice, cry havoc! And then slip the dogs of war, that this bow he shall smell, part the earth with heavy men, roaring for burial.
So, I am Sean Villa.
I'm Ricky Hernandez.
And we participated in the La Coya Playhouse Conservatory Summer Program last year for our group, Athletes.
Welcome from Lincoln High School, and we are by O.G.G. Carl Chin-Chong China.
Some people say golf is a white man's sport. Well, I say, if you're gonna have that attitude, might as well call America a white man's country.
But a lot of these Chinese Americans, they sing that melody, Xiao Mi, Missio Fan, Christie Amaguchi. Fancy thing.
Now, in the business world, golf is of the utmost importance.
Windows games, life will change, and men are made.
The states are in darkness.
When you play golf, be aware.
Of your stance, of your grip, and before you tee off, you don't wanna ask yourself these questions. Does my sink feel natural? What club should I be using? Should I put my palm to it? Am I hitting it at the right spot? Did I wash my golf balls today? And most importantly, can I get it in the hole? And the answer is no, never. You can't just change it up, cause that's the only one that God gave you.
And some people say, "Shut up, spread your ass, everybody, keep your head out of makeup, just makeup, go aim for once."
That's just because you want to aim for perfection. I'm happy to hear also.
Uh, my name is Ivan, and I was previously at the play West Side Story as the lead role of Tony for Lincoln High School. And tonight, while we perform a monologue by King Henry, in the play King Henry by Richard. Once more to the breached, dear prince, once more, or close the wall up with our English dead. Once more to the breached, dear prince, once more, or close the wall up with our English dead. In peace, which nothing so becomes an act, in light stillness, we may. But when you hear the sound of war, glowing eyes, then, you'll take action of a tiger, sticking up the snouts, summon up the blood, the skies bare nature, with ha, fain, and rage. And then, you lend the eye a terrible laugh. Pride it from the portage of the head, as spiritually as a dove gallant walk. Hold hard breath, bend your spirit till its full height. Oi, oi, you noble Englishmen, dishonor not your mothers. Be copy of men of grosser life, and teach them war. You, you, whose wings were made in England, share with us the settle of your passion. Hand your spirits, follow your spirits, and cry, God, for hurry, England, and say, "Gosh!"
I do want to especially thank our students. Um, the student who had agreed to participate earlier had a family emergency at the last minute, so they stepped up to the plate in about four hours. So, thank you very much. They did a phenomenal job. Thanks.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Martin. I'm Mitzi Lizadiga, the principal at the San Diego School of Creative and Performing Arts. And I'm delighted to have this opportunity to showcase one of our students, Kimmy Parker, who's 11th grader at SCPA. And it's also been wonderful to see the students from Lincoln and also the young man from Porter. Um, it is so heartwarming to see the great talent with our district. So I want to commend all of our students. So thank you. And I'm recruiting this young man to come to SCPA when he gets into the 6th grade. I have an ulterior motive. Um, before I introduce the dance excerpt, uh, that Kimmy will be performing, I want to also tell you that Kimmy will be joining 26 other SCPA dancers next month to perform, to, to, to perform at the International High School Dance Festival in Miami. And this is an opportunity for students to, um, perform in front of college representatives and to audition for, um, college scholarships. Um, every day at our school, we celebrate, um, students as scholars and as artists and citizens of the world. And our, it's because of our wonderful faculty members, even though many of our students will graduate and pursue the arts, many of them love to pursue science. And I think that also is a testament to our teachers who are there, as well as, um, the parents who, who, uh, bring their wonderful children to us. So I want to also publicly thank our teachers, who I think do a really great job with our students as well. Um, I also want to give a shout out to Michaela Volk. Everyone knows that she is the ASB District Representative. And she doesn't really talk about herself, but she's waiting to hear from six colleges. She's applied to USC, USD, UC Berkeley, UCSD, UC Irvine, and UCLA. And she's already been accepted into San Diego State University and San Francisco State University. So Michaela, I need to give you a shout out because you do amazing work with the board and for our school. So thank you. As of today, at SCPA, 75% of our, for the class of 2014, have applied to four-year, uh, colleges, universities, and conservatories. Um, I know Kimmy Parker, as 11th grader, is interested in New York University, um, when she graduates. So Kimmy will be performing an excerpt from Donald McHale's masterwork called Rainbow Round My Shoulder. And Donald McHale is a world-renowned choreographer. He received the Tony Award for the Broadway show of Sophisticated Ladies. And he is an Emmy Award nominee for his work on The Bill Cosby Show and also with Disney. Uh, Mr. McHale is an African-American, modern dancer, choreographer, teacher, director, and writer. And he is best known for creating socially-conscious dance concert works during the 1950s and 60s that focus on expressing the human condition and more specifically, the Black experience in America. Mr. McHale is currently a professor at UCI, and he has been one of our resident choreographers at SCPA for the past four years. Um, we're really honored that a man of this stature has been working with our students for the past four years. And he will be our keynote commencement speaker on June 12th at 2:00 p.m. at SCPA. So we're thrilled that he's going to be doing this. So Kimmy will be dancing an excerpt, again, from Rainbow Round My Shoulder, which is a searing, dramatic narrative. This, the music that you will hear, um, is a traditional chain gang song from the collection of John and Alan Lomax. And for music folks, you may know, uh, that, uh, the Lomaxes are ethnomusicologists who capture a lot of the music from the 1920s and 30s, uh, particularly in the South, in the cotton fields, on chain gangs. So this music itself is filled with minor chords and bitter lyrics, and it becomes a lamentation that colors the brutal force of McHale's choreography. You won't be seeing all of it because Rainbow Round My Shoulder really has seven men in it. And these are seven men who are, um, dancing on a chain gang, and it's set in the South. Their harness to do this backbreaking work every day. They have no choice. Um, however, in this backbreaking work and the searing sun, they begin to dream as a way to get, um, through their day. And they, they, they dream about this, about freedom. And this freedom comes in the guise of a woman. And first, uh, this vision is remembered as someone who is a sweetheart, or a mother, or a wife. So this is the, um, the solo piece. If you can imagine, behind, uh, Kimmy would be the seven men dancing, uh, in movements that really epitomize being on a chain gang. Um, and then here comes this dream. So Rainbow Round My Shoulder, I want to tell you that it first premiered in 1959, and it's been seen for the past 50 years, um, as a, uh, a way to deal with civil rights, the activism of civil rights, and I think it's become even more powerful. So let's present the dream solo from Rainbow Round My Shoulder, featuring Kimmy Parker, who is an 11th grade student. And thank you very much.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin and board members. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I have a few comments that I want to make while I have a few comments that I want to make while they set up. We have a special guest from my school, but I wanted to talk about two things. One, I wanted to thank the Board members and Superintendent Martin for their visibility. I've seen you as much as family members, and I appreciate that. In addition, as we started our Common Core efforts and we started to listen to student voices, my students took that another step forward, and they decided since they had a voice now, they wanted to go from events happening to them to events produced by them. So I don't even get to introduce them tonight. They want to do that themselves. That's, they're taking over. They're taking over our Friday flags and some of our assemblies. But right now, we have from our 37th Annual MLK March, every time we have a march, we have the annual MLK speech, and Ms. Nehemiah Gray is going to do that for us, and this is Ms. Nehemiah Gray.
I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out its true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. I have a dream that one day, on the Red Hills of Georgia, the sons of former slaves and the sons of former slave owners will be able to sit down together at a table of brotherhood. I have a dream that one day, even the state of Mississippi, a desert sweltering of heat of justice and oppression, will be transformed into an oasis of freedom and justice. I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they won't be judged by the color of their skin, but in content of their characters. I have a dream that one day, every valley shall be exalted, every hill and mountain shall be made low, and all the rough places shall be made plain, and all the crooked places shall be made straight, and the glory of the Lord shall be revealed, and all flesh shall see it together. I have a dream today. This is our hope, this is our faith, which I return to the South, and with this faith, we'll be able to heal out the mountains and despair a stone of hope. When we let freedom ring, we let it ring from every village and every homestead, and every state and every city, and we'll be able to speed up the day when all God's children, Black men, white men, Jews, Gentiles, Protestants, and Catholics, will be able to sing in the words of that own Negro spiritual, "Free at last, free at last, thank God almighty, we are free at last." Thank you.
Thank you. I know I didn't introduce myself. I'm Gary Rollins, and I am the proud principal of Knox, now Knox Middle School, for all of you who didn't know, we changed. We're now a 6, 7, 8, full middle school. We feed into Lincoln High School, and it's their turn. So I will introduce Mr. Derek Suzuki and let you know that he'll be leaving us soon, which is a great deal for him, because he deserves it. He's going to the tech department, but it's a loss for us. So for our music teachers out there, let's make sure I get someone that can stand up to his role. He's a fabulous teacher. Thank you, ladies.
Good morning, members of board and guests. We are students from Knox Middle School, and we will be performing a song for you today.
The song "O Freedom" became an anthem, important anthem, during the civil rights movement of the mid-20th century.
On the morning of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s famous "I Have a Dream" speech in Washington, DC, Joan Baez opened the day's events by singing this classic song of liberty and the inalienable right to freedom.
Like our arrangement, it takes one voice to start the march towards change, and joined by others, sound in unison, the song of freedom.
Thank you. One more round of applause for all of our wonderful students.
I just wanted to say that I thought I was being a little cute by saying, "Celebration, celebration." Little did I know, it turned into a wonderful, I mean, real big celebration. I think we put on a mini-concert, but it was wonderful. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
There's a move.
All right, please vote. That motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the superintendent's consent agenda in Section I? All right, next, we'll take up Item H4, propositions S and Z, financial and performance audit reports for fiscal year 2012-13. Superintendent Cindy Martin?
Thank you, President Viser. This is for, to accept and approve Proposition S and Z, financial and performance audit reports for fiscal year 2012 and 13, and this is independent financial and performance audits for the bond expenditures that are required every year under the accountability provision of California Proposition 39, Incorporated Article 13A of California Constitution and Ed Code 15264. And we've invited today Financial Audit Christie Whiten Associates and Lee Dolgoff to present on this item.
Good evening. This is Heather Dowd of Christie Whiten Associates. They've conducted an audit in accordance with the requirements of the Ed Code, and they're here to perform, present the report.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you for having me here. Really enjoyed the concert. I just, I'm here to just say that we've completed the audit of the financial and performance audit for Proposition Z and S. I do want to point out, these audits have been completed well in advance of the due date of March 31st, so that is something the district should be commended for. We have finalized copies. A few years ago, that wasn't the case, but we're here. I do also want to point out that the opinions that you received on these financial statements, performance and financial, are unmodified for both, which is the best opinion you can have, and that's a clean opinion. I wasn't going to go into any detail, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer that, unless you would like me to.
Any board member questions? So the grade for the school district for Prop Z and S would be an A+? Is that what you're saying?
Exactly. That's exactly what I'm saying. Just an A. There was a finding in that.
I think if I remember, in past report cards, we've gotten the same grade. Do you know how many years in a row that that has been the case, the unmodified rating?
You've had an unmodified, well, it used to be called unqualified, but this year it's called an unmodified opinion, just to clarify that. And since we've been auditing Prop S and now Prop C, you've always received an unmodified opinion, which I think it's now four or five years in a row.
Is that four or five?
Since 2009, yeah, since 2009, you've received.
So that's five years? Or do we not count '09?
It was '09, it's '08-'09?
It's important.
Oh, first issue, it was 2009. I think it's six years then. 13, 14, 19, 10, 11, sorry, 8, 9, 9, 10, 10, 11, 11, 12, 12, 13, so it is five years.
Five years. So five years in a row, the school district has received an A+ from an independent auditor for Prop S and Z.
Correct.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
...in the courtroom. I know there are, there were some issues on some of the accounting aspects, so as far as the tracking of expenditures and so forth, so maybe it's an A-, but not to quibble over grades, but what, are you comfortable that those changes are going to be handled and dealt with? Specifically, you were talking about some of your findings.
Specifically, I guess the main finding in this case would be the one related to the accounts payable process, which we note is a significant deficiency, significant deficiency, which didn't have a material effect on the financial statements. As far as the team's prior record of dealing with findings that we brought out, we do feel confident going forward that they will fix them. They have a track record of fixing the findings, we point out, within a reasonable amount of time, which would be the next audit. Have we tested to make sure this has been fixed at this point? Not yet, but we will be going out and testing at that point.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other board member comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I'd like to move on to Item D, reporter, close session.
Sorry.
Oh, this is a motion, thank you. Is there a second to accept the audit findings? Please vote. That motion carries unanimously. Reporter, close session action, Superintendent? Ms. Donovan?
Thank you. I'm going to announce the management appointments. The Program Manager for Special Education, Georgina Barajas Aguirre; Program Manager in Placement and Appeal, Felicia Singleton Daniel; Principal at Whitman Elementary, Olga Venegas; and Principal at Maryland's Middle School, Harlan Klein.
Thank you. Onto Item D2, Superintendent's Information Report. Superintendent Martin?
Thank you. In highlighting some of the activities over the last couple of weeks, I want to first begin with a school play at Miramesa High School. I don't know if I have any Miramesa High School students here, but they performed "Shrek", and in alignment with our offering of a broad and challenging curriculum, seeing the students here, we have 150 students made up, the cast, orchestra, theater technicians, and you can see the ASB advisor sat, was a great host that evening, and the star of the play in the middle there, "Shrek," was a great performance, and we have, I don't know all of their names, but you have Rayland was the pig, number three Shane was Shrek, and Lauren Fiona Andres was a donkey, and Niall was a wolf, and in the front row, you see Pinocchio Kyle. And to see a full production of "Shrek" at Miramesa High School, Dr. Evans, I think that you saw part of it. Were you there? No, well, you should.
He was the guy in the green forms, I think, the other one.
They had just seen you recently at something at the school, and so I just, I'm celebrating the performance and seeing the Creative and Performing Arts alive and well, and it was a great evening there. And then we spent some time also at Sarah High School on one of our instructional walk-throughs. This is a teacher, Liz Ward. She's actually a product of San Diego Unified School District, graduate at Sarah High School, and now she's teaching AP English class there, and that was on one of our instructional visits at Sarah. And I couldn't help but, as I was leaving Sarah High School, meeting Kat, Kara Mayer, and if you see the ruby slipper on the front of her landscaping machinery, she cares very much about keeping Sarah High School beautiful, and I couldn't help but take her picture and celebrate the work of our landscapers making our schools beautiful. When we do our instructional walk-throughs, we're looking, of course, at the teaching and learning in the classroom, the broad and challenging curriculum, the Creative and Performing Arts, but our schools being a quality school in every neighborhood, our landscaping and the beauty of the school matters, and of course, there's no place like home, and she has her ruby slipper on the front of her. I don't know what that's called, a tractor, lawnmower, anyway. And then Miramesa High School, also have to recognize, we're national championships. I don't know if this had been celebrated, but they won national championship, the Miramesa High School cheerleaders, wanted to make sure that we recognized them. And then, Board, I would like you to know that after we had the Trayvon Martin-Jord Zimmerman dialogues with the adults, thanks to Michaela leading the ASB, we had the student dialogues happening here, where we brought all of our ASB presidents to lead the conversation with the high school students, so we turned it from adult conversation to student conversation to talk about the biases on high school campuses, and we broadened the conversation to go beyond just the Zimmerman-Martin dialogues, but to talk about what biases mean to us and how we can lead. And so it went through our student congresses, so, Michaela, I appreciate your leadership on that. Now the dialogues are going to go out to the school sites with the ASBs leading this, and they will be reporting back to the Board what their findings are and what steps they're going to be taking through their student congress activities. And then we had an event at Lincoln High School. There's Trustee Foster with Dr. O from Lincoln, and Chancellor Pradeep Kozla from UCSD, as we were recognizing or giving opportunities for Lincoln High School students to learn the pathways to UC, and very strong partnership with the university in giving students opportunity and access. That was an evening at Lincoln last week. We also attended the Laurels for Leaders Luncheon, 57th Annual Laurels for Leader Luncheon, that was honoring all of our ASB presidents. Michaela and I spent a lot of time together, and she was a member of the audience, but also Todd Gloria was our speaker, and he had been one of the ASB presidents in our district, and they had a photograph of him at his Laurels for Leader Luncheon. How many years before did he? In 1996. 18 years ago, he was at that luncheon as a student like Michaela, and then he was speaking to the luncheon that day. Close up? Oh, you were, oh, you were there too. So we, San Diego Unified was well represented and got to hear our mayor talk about how he started there. Also went to an event with Scripps Ranch High School, Teen Iron Chef Champions. This is one of our career pathways around, again, broad and challenging curriculum. Our culinary arts students from Morris, San Diego, Madison, Hoover, Scripps Ranch High Schools competed for the title of Teen Iron Chef, and Scripps Ranch students were the winners, and these are programs around these pathways, giving students career and trade experience is wonderful to celebrate. I couldn't help but put this picture up at Sarah High School. This is what success looks like. Chief of Staff Susie Monreal and I, when we were visiting Sarah, Darlene came up to us, and we remember Darlene, when we, I was a vice principal at Central, and Ms. Monreal was the principal. Darlene had just entered the United States as a third grader in her first day of school. She had to take a standardized test with almost no background in English, and now she is applying to several colleges. She's a senior at Sarah High School, and to watch, she was actually getting on a plane that afternoon to fly up to Sacramento to do some budget advocacy work with a group that she's involved in, and she's applying to top-tier universities, and to see her, remembering her on her first day in the United States at Central Elementary as a third grader, and running into her that day just brings tears to my eyes. It doesn't get any better than that. We also attended the Superheroes of San Diego Luncheon, promoting 211 San Diego, a very strong partner with us, and making sure our families know how to access resources. And we attended, Trustee Foster and I, were at the Project Ujima Celebration of Black History Month, celebrating the Munford Point Marines of San Diego, and there was a digital storytelling project. That Project Ujima won a grant, or a grant to do digital storytelling and screen the month, they were able to have students actually interview the Marines on this important history, and the DVD was shown that night for the first, was it the first time it was shown? And we are very proud of our students for being able to tell the story, the Munford Point Marines, who were the first African-Americans to serve in the US Marine Corps following Franklin Roosevelt's 1941 executive order, and to learn that history, it's a living history, and to have these gentlemen tell the story that despite serving with honor and distinction in the face of horrendous discrimination at home and abroad, the Munford Point Marines only recently began to receive the national attention. So this Project Ujima, with the Community Stories Grant that they got, were able to tell the story, and it's very much aligned to the broad and challenging curriculum in terms of, we don't just learn our stories in textbooks anymore, that our stories are living stories, and the multiple perspectives and points of view that the students had to put together to tell this story. It also highlights the work of, at the It also highlights the work of, at the Ballard Center, and Dr. Pat Washington, and Project Ujima with real active parent engagement, and it was very nice last Friday night to see that work. And then on Saturday, there was a Community Violence Prevention Summit. I'm not sure if you all know, I'm one of the commissioners on the San Diego Gang Task Force, and this was one of our events on Saturday, bringing in multiple agencies. I was proud of our staff. Chief Littlejohn did one of the presentations around our safe schools, and we also had the parents from Cherokee Point Elementary School that were presenting on the restorative justice program and trauma-informed care. I don't have their picture, but I'm going to bring it next time because there's a picture of our parents teaching a class at the summit as part of the work that they've done at Cherokee Point at this Violence Prevention Summit. And I know I have a lot of things to talk about, I'm going to go fast. On Saturday, also that, after the Violence Prevention Summit, I participated in the budget town hall meeting with Dr. Shirley Weber, and that was at Johnson Elementary, and we appreciate the opportunity for Dr. Weber to hold an event at one of our school sites so that we're participating in a dialogue with our elected officials around Sacramento and around Governor Brown's, Governor Brown's proposed budget for 1415, what the challenges are, possible solutions, and we appreciate Dr. Weber for having open, transparent budget conversations of what's going on at the state level and doing that at one of our school sites, so our families can participate and understand what's happening at the state level. And District E, that it was, Marianne Foster's saying, happy that it was in District E. And then finally, Vision 2020 forums are continuing. This is a picture of, we memorial this parent, we should actually have the video of him, he kicked off the Vision 2020 forums, and then last night was the second one at Mission Bay High School. And these forums are very important in the work that we're doing to implement Vision 2020 and the input that the Board of Education that you all have asked for to help you with making lots of decisions, and it's not just the place where, it's not an LCAP or LCFF input forum, this is a broad forum in setting our priorities for the long term, and the process that we're going through, there's many opportunities for people to give input, and we're going to continue to explain and talk about the opportunities to give input beyond advisory committees, through the already, the structures that we already have and more that we'll continue to develop. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Board information reports. Trustee Barnett?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know my, the public would rather hear about parades and other events I went to, but I think I'm going to take this opportunity to talk about health care. And my view on health care, based since we had several hundred employees here tonight, and I've expressed the same view to SDEA when I was asked to meet with their members, so that way everyone can know my views. We spend about, on health benefits, 175, $78 million a year on our health benefits for all our employees in the district, including board members who choose to take health care. I do, for me and my kids, and it's very critical, certainly for me and my family. That goes up, the cost goes up about five-plus percent every year. Call it $9 million a year of those cost increases to the district. That's equivalent, $9 million, to about 140 classified employees or 100 teachers and counselors as far as that cost increased every year. Now, while the Board has discussed and health care in closed session, we cannot by law discuss our specific discussions in closed session, but I, as an individual board member, can certainly tell you my views, and I think it's important I do so. As I said, I take health care and I take the, when the HMO plans. Previously, I took the most expensive plan, and for reasons of personal choice, chose to reduce it to the HMO plan. My eldest child, who's in college now, is still covered, complete, and there's no premiums to me or any employees for this health care. We have some pre-existing conditions in our family, so that's a significant issue, as some employees mentioned today, certainly to me, and I appreciate and understand that's a significant issue to many, many, many employees. I appreciate the one gentleman who spoke, who specifically said we want to be partners, and I can't recall the gentleman's name, there you are, very tall and articulate gentleman, and I think we all do want to be partners, I know the Board all wants to be partners. My view is, though, with this cost going up five-plus percent every year, we have to find ways to reduce the increasing cost. I don't think we'll ever get to a point where we'll reduce the cost, who knows, but in order to look at, we need to look at options, and I view we have to do the following things. Number one, what is the impact of Obamacare? Our staff is looking into that. What is, can we shift some of our costs to Obamacare and maintain the same benefits? The key is maintain the same benefits, can we shift those costs to the federal government? I'd be very happy to have the federal government pick up some of those costs unless in our local district, and that would reduce money, so I think we need to explore what that means, and I don't know if we have the answers to that. Can we, and this is one thing I've talked about for three-plus years now, and this Board has looked at, can we change our management of our benefits? We've had the same management VIBA for 20 years. We put about 40% of the money into the system, and we have one vote on a 16-member Board that the district has. I believe we should have more control over how we spend that $178 million a year than one vote. Now, we asked the staff to do a study, the study was done some months ago, the original study, it has not been released publicly yet, I'm hoping it will be released publicly so we can at least have a discussion. The goal is, can we get the same benefits we have today and reduce our management costs? I don't know, but we need to look at that. That's, next, I believe that employees with pre-existing conditions should be protected in any changes we made. That was a clear issue that was raised today, so if we make any changes, it isn't going to be a matter of deciding whether you can afford health care or pay your bills, or whether or not you have to change a provider who may be used for quite a number of years. So that, to me, is a clear tenet that I personally support, and would, and secondly, though, however, I believe all new employees, if they don't have pre-existing conditions, that we should offer Kaiser only to all new employees, and we are going to probably be hiring every year several hundred employees, and if they don't have pre-existing conditions, then I think that is, it will be a significant savings, and it will, it will start that process. Secondly, all existing employees, I think we need to look at an incentive plan to try to move people to Kaiser if they don't have pre-existing conditions, and because ultimately, if every employee, including me, went to Kaiser only, the district thinks we'd save $12 million a year. Obviously, we can't just make the decision on financial reasons alone because we have issues of pre-existing conditions, doctors, but the point is, it's, a lot of employees do use Kaiser, and it can meet the needs of others. So the bottom line is, and if other employees who are, don't have pre-existing conditions, and they're new employees, and they want to pay for a more expensive plan, then they would have that option. Lastly, I made a commitment to SDA, when I met with them, that whatever we offer, even our new employees, I will, as this board member, commit to take the lowest valued health care of any employee, be they new employee as a board member. So these are important issues affecting your lives, your families, your children, my life, my family, my children, I understand that. At the same time, the costs are going up astronomically every year, we need to partner, we need to work together, and we have to be honest with the numbers, have a public, open dialogue, so everyone, every one of your members, every member of the public, every taxpayer understands the information and understand, I believe every board member's heart is in the same place, that we believe that this is a valuable benefit, and we're not talking about taking away, removing health care. So please let all of us remove the scare tactics and the fear, and so you know my position, and I believe, and you may disagree with it, and you may support it, but I believe it's a place to start discussions, and I'm hoping my colleagues will, over maybe when we have a public meeting, will express their positions, and then we can actually have an open discussion about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Burnett, Trustee Bernetta?
Thank you, President Visor, I just, a couple of quick things that I want to thank Superintendent Martin and our team for pulling together. First is, is I think a lot of people know, we've had a process in place in the district for many years, that when a opening comes up at a school for a principal, we go through a process where we sit down with parents, sit down with staff, identify the qualities that the school community is looking for in the next leader, and then we put a panel together that includes parents and staff, come up with a series of recommendations based on interviews with applicants to the superintendent, and I think it's, it's a process that has served us well. And occasionally, that process, I think, becomes critically important, I think it's, it's always important, but in particular situations, such as the one at Hoover High School, and I know we've got some folks here from the City Heights Partnership for Children tonight, some students from Hoover High School. So at Hoover High School, Dr. Chuck Podorsky has led the school community for 12 years, and has now moved over to La Jolla High School, and I know that that has created a lot of anxiety within the school community about what kind of leader are we going to have moving forward, and I want to thank our area superintendent, Mitzi Moreno, and again Superintendent Martin, for spending the time, you know, going, listening to the school community, conducting the beginning of this process. I think it was very important for Superintendent Martin to be there, both to ensure that, you know, from the very top of the district, you know, our intention is to listen to the community and to make a decision that meets community needs, but frankly, we know that Cindy Martin is a longtime stakeholder herself in the Hoover cluster, and I, and I think to bring the perspective, you know, of a leader in the City Heights community to there was important. And so, again, I thank the students, I thank the parents, I thank the staff for participating actively in that discussion, and I know we're, you know, we're in a good, good place to eventually identify the right leader to move Hoover forward. I also want to thank Superintendent Martin for pulling together a task force of district and community leaders around the linked learning concept in high school, and we've had a lot of discussion here for a number of years on the Board about transforming high school. We do think that we've got a lot of great examples of innovation in our high schools, we saw some incredible demonstrations of student performance tonight. However, we know that the traditional high school concept is something that really does need to be revamped, is not something that is, that we should be moving forward with without changes. It's a, it's a, it's a traditional structure that frankly has gone back probably about a good 100 years, that I'm not sure made sense 100 years ago and doesn't make a lot of sense today, and I think the, the concept of integrating this, the academic knowledge that a student is developing with real-world experience and relevant experience, which is sort of at the core of linked learning, is where we need to move the district forward. And I felt at this meeting last week that this was the most serious expression that I've, you know, to date, of the district fully intending, throwing itself completely in to the process of revamping high school, and it was great to have Cheryl Hiblin, the leader of a couple of our Kearney schools, that was, you know, that was facilitating that discussion, because Kearney is a great example of where, you know, 21st century high school can be. So I want to thank you, Superintendent Martin, for both the Hoover process and the linked learning process.
Trustee Dr. Evans?
Thank you. Couple of things, and one thing, I was really happy to be at the forums with Superintendent Martin and other, other board members, and I think it's been mentioned tonight, we had people talking about the LCAP, and one of the things that was mentioned was that someone said that four of the eight LCAP indicators were student-centric, and so I started looking at the 12 quality indicators here, and I couldn't find one of ours that's not student-centric, access to broad and challenging curriculum, closing the achievement gap with high expectations for all, even quality support staff, but it's integrated and focused on student achievement, obviously quality teaching is focused on student achievement, quality leadership, professional learning for staff, is all focused on student achievement. So I think one thing, what a lot of people don't realize, that we're really leading the state in terms of this whole process of the LCAP process, which we started long before, with Superintendent Martin, long before there was a name called LCAP, I think. And I think that what we, the only thing we need to do is really just to, as was pointed out, show how these 12 indicators and the eight state indicators, how they fit together so that we can, everybody will see really clearly what we're doing that's for our local benefit but aligns with the state requirement at the same time. And then another thing I wanted to mention was, I was at, before the forum, I was at the Miramesa Cluster Meeting, and one of the things I always said is, if for, to get a good turnout of people, you, all you have to do is announce that you're going to close a school and the auditorium will be packed. This is a little bit different situation because it was to talk about the opening of a new school, of Jonas Salka Elementary in Miramesa, and yet even with the opening of a school, there are a lot of, lot of issues that come up in terms of, you know, changing attendance boundaries and how that affects different families and traffic patterns and so forth. Questions about, you know, what, what grade levels the school will start with, whether to start with all of them or most of them. There are other, all the pieces of the puzzle came about, and one of the things that was interesting is, the superintendent is working on having the staff work with each cluster on a cluster master planning process for each cluster in terms of looking at both academically, facilities, everything that the cluster is going to need in the long term, and we're in Miramesa kind of tying this together, both the entry of Salka Elementary in there with the, with the master planning for the school. I mean, one of the issues, another issue is the, a lot of aged portables, and a lot of them can be taken away because some of those students will actually go to the permanent facility at Salka Elementary. Another issue was the fact that two or three of the schools in Miramesa are on year-round rather than traditional, and when they're redrawing the attendance boundaries, it's looking at how that's going to affect in terms of people being on, on year-round versus traditional, and possibly including that in one of the pilots for changing the schools. The whole thing about this process is that it's a back-and-forth dialogue between the district and, and the community, so it's not just the community gets together and votes and says, this is what we're going to do, it's not the district just coming in and saying, announcing, this is what we have done, but it's really the community and the district working together and saying, okay, these are some possibilities, what do you think about this, what do you think about that, working it out, coming back and seeing what are the financial implications, but doing it back and forth in a, in a constant dialogue, both for the facilities and for the academic part. So I'm excited about that because this is really, I think, help, will help a lot of clusters get focused on really what, what their mission is, it's not necessarily just to, to give an opinion on, well, everybody's welcome to do that and certainly contact their board members about every issue that the district takes up, but really what can be done in each community to improve the schools, what is the cluster need from the district, and what does the district need from, from the cluster. And it was encouraging, last night at the, at the forum at Mission Bay, that people were really talking about that they've seen a real change in the fact that, that schools in each community are working together, that kindergarten, the, kindergarten, the elementary, middle, and high school teachers and staffs were talking a lot more to each other, there was, there was more of a cluster identity, more of a focus on, on neighborhood schools, and there were a lot of other good things too, I mean, just by the way, I mean, they certainly pointed out a big difference in terms of principals being in the classroom a lot more, and the positive effect that that was having on, on teacher improvement and student achievement and so forth, so that was really encouraging to see that some of these things we've been talking about are actually starting to happen in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Foster?
Well, in District E, one thing that I'm really proud and encouraged about is the conversations that are happening now around Lincoln High School, and teachers, leadership, community members, parents, talking about the type of school that they want, and it also goes back to what, the outcomes of the conversation that you mentioned, Trustee Barrera, about the personalization of education, making sure that we meet the needs of all children. children. And I'm also encouraged, because I know that leadership with the big picture, who has, is nationally recognized around their work with personalization and making education work for all children, was also at the table, and there's a lot of synergy there, and they're working very collaboratively with us. So that's a lot of good work that's coming out that we're going to benefit from, benefit from, at Lincoln High School. So I'm really proud about that. And I also, just point of clarification, I know Citizen mentioned something about the celebration that's being discussed right now with the Morris Cluster. And I just have to make clear that in District E, when we're serving 31,000 students, 90% free and reduced lunch, 40% English as a second language learners, that need so much and also having the highest concentration of foster youth, we're not just throwing parties, that's what we're not doing. But it's more in terms of what we're trying to provide is a resource fair, so that parents are clear about what they can access, and the conversation is about equity, and to present resources that they desperately need. So that's really what's happening, and that's the discussion. And it moves forward with, within the Morris Cluster, when the stakeholders that are participating in those meetings, they decide that that's what they want and that's what they need. And if that is the case, and it sounds like it is, that's what we're going to provide. So I just want to make that, that point of clarification. And then, lastly, on Tuesday of this past week, I had the honor and the privilege of attending the opening ceremony of the Tuskegee Airmen Exhibition that was housed at our own Porter Elementary School. And in San Diego, we still have two original Tuskegee Airmen that are living and that we were able to actually celebrate, the kids were actually able to hear their stories, and the exhibition was really a movie theater on wheels that was live, surround sound, that 30, groups of 30 or 40 students at a time were able to actually kind of get a taste of and experience a little bit of what they went through, the Tuskegee Airmen, as the first aviation men, servicemen to serve in World War II, African-American aviators. So it was really something to behold, and it was sponsored by the San Diego Regional Airport Authority that actually funded this exhibit for us, and it happened at our own Porter Elementary School. So it was really something to behold, and so that's my report.
Airmen exhibit or moving?
Oh, it was for one week. So it started this past Tuesday, and it ended on Friday. So if you didn't see it, I'm sorry, we have pictures, though.
Thank you. In terms of my board report, I attended the California School Board Association meeting representing the San Diego Unified. We had vigorous conversations about the childhood, early childhood education, and a lot of the other school districts in the county are very envious that our superintendent and finance department have figured out a strategy to have transitional kindergarten next year in all of our elementary schools. Also attended the Patrick Henry High School Cluster Meeting and had the opportunity to talk to all of the parents and the community members about the Patrick Henry High School Cluster. Last night, I attended the Patrick Henry High School Candlelight Vigil to honor student Jewel Pimentel, who passed away abruptly from an illness. She was a freshman and a flutist, musician, and loved cheer. I want to personally thank Principal Mrs. Gillingham for coordinating such a wonderful tribute. So many parents, teachers, friends, and community members came out to honor Jewel's memory. And then on February 21st, I attended the California State All Band Conference in Fresno with the California Music Educators Association. We had several students from San Diego Unified that participated and were members of the California State All Band. From Point Loma High School, percussionist Michael Brown, tuba player Clifton McKenzie from Patrick Henry High School, French horn Tim Toomes from Scripps Ranch High School, baritone Alec Candib, and bassoon Michael Lamar from Mira Mesa High School, alto sax Jake Boring, and from Wangenheim Middle School, clarinetist Davis Boring. And then the other thing that I did at the conference was I received an award, I was named the California State Music Legislative Advocate of the Year. But, well, but that award is not for me. That award is for this Board of Education, because it takes a whole board to stand up and protect music and to continue to make sure that the resources are going to music and education and the visual and performing arts. I just want to make an announcement. Trustee Barrera talked about these amazing community meetings and forums, and I just wanted to advertise for those of you that would like to come out and attend the District B Community Meeting for Vision 2020, will be at Patrick Henry High School this Saturday, March 1st, at 3:00 p.m. And we're having a parent meeting for Jarabek Elementary School Parents Wednesday, February 26th, tomorrow night at 6:30 p.m. Thank you.
Let me throw in there, too, I forgot to say, Monday, March 3rd, there'll be the Vision 2020, which is two days later, Mira Mesa for District A.
Thank you, Trustee Dr. Evans. Anybody else? Okay. All right, let's move on to Student Instructional Matters with the Associated Student Body President's Report for the Council, Michaela Volk.
So as mentioned, we did have our student congress focusing on biases, and it was, it was a way that the council believed the students from each high school would feel comfortable talking about biases, and it was the way that we would encourage them to continue these dialogues on their campuses, especially the Trayvon Martin Dialogue. And if I could talk about my school, because I think we did really good things. My advisor and my principal kind of coached me on how to facilitate dialogues, and we started with a TED Talk, which talked about the issues of single story, the danger of a single story, and it was a woman from Africa, and one thing that she said was, although stereotypes are not untrue, they're incomplete, and a lot of people don't know, they just view things one way, and that's when our ASB started to talk about, or started to feel comfortable talking about biases towards race and biases towards gender. So our ASB decided that we're going to have the Trayvon Martin Dialogue at SCPA on April 9th at 2:30, and then from there, other schools can see how we do it, and then they can do it at their school as well.
Thank you. Next item is City Heights Educational Collaborative Report, Quality Schools in Every Neighborhood, Indicator Number Six, Parent and Community Engagement Around Student Achievement. Superintendent Martin?
Thank you, President Visser. This is an annual report that's required, but with the partnership that we have had since 1998 between San Diego State University and, what's happening? Move the mic down? Okay. Maybe, is it feedback from the phone? If you move your phones, we might... Move our phones, okay. So the partnership, City Heights Educational Collaborative was established in 1998, and it was a connection, I know it well with my work in City Heights most recently, but this collaborative is something with Clark Middle School, Rosa Parks Elementary School, Hoover High School, and then as of 2013-14, the collaborative also included Wilson Middle School. So part of the, the partnership was renewed in 2002 and 2011, it's automatically extended annually, but part of the MOU, as agreed upon with the district, is that the collaborative partnership needs to submit an evaluation report that includes the student achievement and the outcomes of the program descriptions, and how this partnership with San Diego State and the collaborative is benefiting and impacting student achievement. Of course, this partnership happened in 1998, long before the Quality School Indicators and Vision 2020, but we're aligning the work to Quality School Indicator Number Six, which the board has identified as one of the Quality School Indicators, meaning that a school is a great school when you have parent-community engagement around student achievement. And when you talk about what makes a school great, we don't just say parent-student engagement, it's parent-student engagement to impact student achievement. So the presentation tonight will show that, of course, it's part of their annual report, but they're going to show how it's aligned to Vision 2020 and how a strong partnership with our universities makes a difference in the academic achievement of our children. So we have Principal from Clark Middle School, Tom Liberto, who I'm sure is going to help introduce and go through the presentation this afternoon.
Thank you, and good evening. Very much appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight, but more importantly, thank you for the opportunity to serve our children in City Heights. It's a very special place, and we're all very committed to that work. I am Tom Liberto, and I am the Principal of Monroe Clark, as Superintendent Martin had shared. I'm also a graduate of Crawford High School, so go Colts. Yeah, made that connection with you. I'm also the parent, just as a side note, of three Unified students in three different schools in our district. Matter of fact, my old, second daughter was on that championship cheer team from Mira Mesa High School, so thank you for sharing that, Superintendent Martin. I was very proud as a dad to see that. I'm sorry? Did you? Thank you. I have served at Clark for six years as the principal, and I can honestly say it's been the most rewarding assignment. I've been a principal for 16 years in our district, but Clark has been very much the most rewarding, and as you've seen from the data, Clark has made some pretty substantial gains over the past few years. We're very proud of that. And as Superintendent Martin mentioned, I'm here just to align our work with the Vision 2020, so hopefully I can go through this rather quickly and share that. The first is student achievement. We obviously get a lot of support around the former CSTs, and now it's the Smarter Balance Tests that will be coming, and the support that the collaborative gives us is through intervention teachers. We have student advocates at most of our schools who help students and families, and a lot of tutoring services, which we know, especially in communities like City Heights, is very needed for after-hours and things like that. But they also help prepare our students for higher learning. You know that our theme is, we're going to college and college-going preparedness, and so even before the Common Core was on the radar, if you will, about four years ago, we started that work through the collaborative. And I can honestly say that that transition for teachers within the collaborative has been a lot less threatening, because we've been doing it for that much longer. And the way that we do that is through San Diego State's support. We have two departments that are supporting our schools in the secondary level, the Rhetoric and Writing Department. We have two professors from that department at San Diego State that conduct a monthly professional development with our teachers in English Language Arts. So our English Language Arts teachers are getting firsthand knowledge of what students really need to be successful in college, and we're preparing them from 6th grade in the collaborative, both Wilson, Clark, and obviously at Hoover. And we've recently started that work with the Mathematics Department at San Diego State, and in fact, we just had last Thursday our first full collaborative PD, where we had, I want to say, close to 40 teachers from all three schools with three professors from the Math Department. And I can just tell you as a side note, that the math teachers I've spoken to from Clark have said it's been one of the most powerful PDs that they've had in a long, long time. We also get support with the SAT and CASSY and the ACT preparedness, and the Mastery Model, which if you're not familiar with that, it's really offering students repeated opportunities to learn and to master those concepts that we're teaching them. Schools as Neighborhood Learning Centers, we have highly active parent centers in all of our schools, provided mostly by the collaborative. We have the College Avenue Compact Family Programs, where families get involved and learn about how to send their children to college. We have health centers at the three schools, at Parks, Rosa, I'm sorry, Rosa Parks, Clark, and Hoover. And then we have safety grants and safety programs, we have our Hoover Cluster work, which obviously the collaborative is a part of. And then the elementary-to-high-school alignment, I've already talked about the Rhetoric and Writing in the Mathematics Department, but they also provide a lot of services in the Counseling Department. So at Rosa Parks, at Wilson, at Clark, and at Hoover, all of our counselors meet regularly and talk about how do we support our children, K to 12 and beyond, through the systems, and like I said, the collaborative has helped us with that. Effective teachers and principals, we have our own student teaching block, the City Heights Teaching Blocks, so I can just tell you, from Clark's experience, we've hired many of our student teachers, who were the best and the brightest, into positions there at Clark. We have social workers and counseling interns, professional development, I've already mentioned, through the Math Department, the Rhetoric and Writing, and then we've been working, obviously, with professional learning communities for a while. The parents and community members engaged in learning is another indicator. We have college-oriented workshops for parents, parent field trips to universities, and we also have, like I said, the Hoover Cluster work. Finally, the last one is the communication, and all of the above that I have mentioned, under communication comes the finances and the dedication, that costs a lot of money. And so we're very, very grateful for the dedication that the collaborative has given to us, even to the extent of using my big campus when that first came out, website support, and on and on and on. And I started to think about how I would end my little part of the presentation before I asked Rosa Parks to come forward, and I thought, you know, I could say that the City Heights Educational Collaborative is a true partner, but it goes beyond that. They're family. To the schools in City Heights, the City Heights Educational Collaborative is part of our family, and we really couldn't do the work to the extent that we do without them, and we're very, very thankful for their support. So I'm going to ask Carol Ann Bougay, who is the Principal at Rosa Parks, to come forward at this time.
Good evening, how are you? So, good evening to all of you, Superintendent Martin and board members. I'm Carol Ann Bougay, the Principal at Rosa Parks Elementary in City Heights, and this is Irene Hightower, our Vice Principal, and I do have a 5th grade teacher hiding out in the back there, Colleen Crandall, who's joined me tonight as well. And for the past six years, our 4th grade students have participated in an incredible program called I'm Going to College. It involves four classroom presentations about getting ready for college, and in addition, it includes parent information meetings, and last year, we had over 100 parents attend our spring meeting, and they learned about how they can support and help prepare their college to get them ready. And we brought those parents and students to San Diego State University to experience life on a college campus, and it was an absolutely amazing opportunity for our parents, because for some of them, it was the very first time they had been on a campus as well. Today, I brought with me 12 of my tiger cub friends from Rosa Parks, who want to share with you their walk-away experience and excitement about wanting to attend college and pursuing their own career. Okay, Natalie, go.
Hello, my name is Natalie Valenzuela, and I want to attend SDSU College. I want to be a chef when I grow up, because I love food, and I want to create great recipes.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Alagueres, and I want to attend a college at SDSU, and I want to be a police officer when I grow up.
My name is Irma Sanchez. My name is Irma Sanchez, I'm planning to attend to the SDSU University. When I grow up, I want to work to be a dentist, because it's so interesting how they fix your teeth, and even when they put braces on.
Hi, my name is Frances Olacha, and I want to go to San Diego State University College. When I grow up, I want to be a dentist, because I want, I love helping people with their teeth.
Good evening, my name is Aral Perez. I'm, I plan on going to college. I would love to be an artist, because you get to be creative and be inspired by anything in the world.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Tran. I will enroll at SDSU. I aspire to be a fashion designer, because I just love clothes.
My name is Jennifer Wajaka. I want to go to San Diego State University College. I want to be an interior designer, because I love to decorate areas and make them beautiful.
My name is Anton Baldorama. I want to go to San Diego State University, where I hope to study music and become a singer.
Hello, my name is Priya Lee, and I want to go to SDSU. When I grow up, I plan to be a mechanic, because I love technology.
My name is Hi Lam, and I'm planning to attend UCSD. I'm going to be a doctor when I grow up, because I love helping people.
Hi, I'm Hector Serrano. I will enroll at San Diego State University. When I grow up, I want to be a worker at Google, because I love the internet.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Magana. When I, I'm going to go attend SDSU. When I grow up, I want to be a doctor, because I want to help care the sick people.
Nobody wants to be a politician? That's surprising.
A big thank you to our students from Rosa Parks and to Irene and to Carol Ann. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Martin. My name is Lilian Garcia and as of yesterday, I'm the new director of the City Heights Educational Collaborative, so thank you for having us today. And I also want to thank Tom Liberto for his great introduction. So as you all received the reports for the 2012-2013 school year, this presentation's going to be a high-level summary of some of the information in that report. And let's see. So what I'm going to do is I'll be reviewing some of the background of the Collaborative and College Avenue Compact, some highlights, and then some next steps. So as we said before, the Collaborative is really a partnership between the school district, STEA, SDSU, and Price Charities. And the schools that are involved are Hoover High, Monroe-Clark, Wilson, and Rosa Parks. In terms of the background of the Collaborative and the work that's being done in City Heights, it really started with Price Charities wanting to create sustainable improvement in the area. And the four areas that they were looking to do this was infrastructure, commerce, development, and in education. And education is where the Collaborative came in. So going along with Vision 2020 that Tom Liberto very efficiently highlighted, really we call our schools collaborative schools and really they're community schools, just like Vision 2020. And one of the citations that we have here is "Studies indicate strong family-school partnerships increase academic engagement and performance." So that's what we're all about. And really, the Collaborative's purpose is to employ the resources of San Diego State University to improve the academic performance of students in collaborative schools. So the original model when the Collaborative started was really seeing the schools as a teaching hospital. And as you can see from the, I'm a little behind here, from the graphic, really it was more focused on teachers and then eventually students would benefit. So it was a little bit more heavier on the, on the teacher end and the professional development side and not as much on, there was less of an emphasis on direct student services. Now, the model, since we've started College Avenue Compact, is really more towards students and having direct student services. And College Avenue Compact, which I'll go over in a bit, really frames all of that work. So in terms of family academic support, targeted college advising, targeted academic interventions, and transitional programs as well. And we are still obviously doing professional development, especially in English and in math. And that work is much more aligned with the work of the school district than it was ever So in terms of College Avenue Compact, hopefully most of you already know, this is guaranteed admission to San Diego State University. Hoover is the only high school in the district that has this guaranteed admission and it is mirrored after the Compact for Success in the Sweetwater School District. So our students have to meet certain benchmarks. They must be enrolled at Hoover by ninth grade, have to complete their 15 A3G requirements, maintain a 3.0 or above in those A3G requirements. They have to take the SAT or the ACT. They have to pass the entry-level math or the English placement tests. And these are exams at the SDSU level that show proficiency, so students do not need remediation. And they have to obviously pass the high school exit exam and they need to meet the minimum CSU eligibility. So College Avenue Compact would provide academic rigor and student support services that will better prepare our students to be college-ready. And in the past couple of years, we've really focused on providing more direct services to help our students meet the benchmarks. So we're not just saving you, we're saving you a spot at San Diego State, your guaranteed admission, but now we're really trying to provide more services to direct that work. This is the first year, for instance, that we're providing SAT preparation for students as well. So the next slide shows our major areas of work and they're divided by grade levels and then also by three areas, so academic, college readiness, and family support. And Tom highlighted a lot of these already, but we have transitioned to kinder programs, transitioned to ninth-grade programs, the English and the math work that's going on. And then I'll go into specifics on College Avenue Compact services and family services as well. So at the middle school level, we have student academic support. This is workshops on study skills and the Cardinal Camp Transition to High School Program, which is a two-week program for entering ninth-grade students. It's a mix of students from, from low to high achieving. We really try to focus on students that are in the summer school, require summer school at the end of eighth grade, to give them those transitional skills that they'll be needing to be successful at the high school level. And then we also have, we work very closely with our counselors to provide classroom presentations, not only about how to navigate through the educational system and have us, and how to prepare for high school at the middle school level, but then how to then think about the future and think about college and future careers as well. We also have field trips and a college club where students get together and learn how to be leaders and how to plan for their future and be a student voice to help other students learn about college as well. So some, I'll be highlighting some successes. So for the 2012-2013 school year, in terms of students that attended Cardinal Camp, they're showing a stronger academic rigor than other, than students that did not attend. So they have fewer Ds and Fs, they have more credits towards going into 10th grade, and they, and they have a higher weighted GPA as well. At the high school level, and again, we're calling this College Avenue On Track, really we're helping to foster and create the college-going culture, not only within the students, but with the families and with the staff as well. So one of our main areas is one-on-one college advising and mentoring. This is for all juniors and seniors. Individual assist system, this is during the day, this is after school, with college applications, financial aid forms, the Dream Act, scholarship applications as well. College and career readiness and financial aid presentations. Community college supports, actually, tonight at Hoover, we had a community college family night where all the local community colleges come out and share with our families about the opportunities for community college and how that's another pathway to reach their ultimate destination of a four-year university. We also have College Prep Day, which I believe was presented a few months ago, where all of our students and all of our staff at Hoover High School are participating on this day. All of our teachers are proctoring or co-proctoring and every student from ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th are taking one of the practice entrance exams for the ACT or the PSAT. And also, our seniors are participating in college seminars as well. Obviously, providing support and preparation for the college entrance exams themselves and for EPT and ELM. And also, college field trips, as you can see, mostly to SDSU. And so others, collaborative successes in terms of college preparation, 90% of Hoover students in this year and last year took the PSAT, the ACT Explorer, or the PLAN. And then 56% of our seniors took the SAT and 41% took the ACT. And we're really pushing for more of our students to not only learn about the ACT but to take the ACT. And then in terms of college enrollment, the number of students who are accepted to SDSU through College Avenue Compact, again, they do not need remediation, which is their main goal, so they, they can be successful their first year of college, has increased since the inception in 2011. And the number of Hoover students enrolling in a two-year or a four-year university or college is at its highest in the past six years. So in terms of College Avenue Family, so this is, we call this family for everything that's oriented towards our parents and family members. So we also have transitional programs for our parents so that they understand how they can help support their student to be successful as they're going towards the next step in their educational careers. So this would be, again, transition to kinder boot camp at Rosa Parks, bridging to middle school at the middle schools, and bridging to high school, which we partner with the Parent Institute for Quality Education to really tailor the program towards Hoover High School itself. We also have grade-level parent meetings, which detail graduation and college information at each different parent, I'm sorry, at each different grade level, and we're very closely with our counselors on that. Again, whatever we do for our students, we try to make sure that parents are aware of that as well. So we have college prep and financial aid family nights as well. And then individual parent advising and parent portal support, and also college tours for our parents. In terms of collaborative successes with family involvement, at Rosa Parks, 60% of the families have attended at least one academic parent event focused on English or in math. Many of them in the past year focused on Common Core. And at Hoover, 45% of the families attended at least one College Avenue family event, again, highlighting how they can support their student in preparing for college and beyond. And then family events at the middle school levels are definitely increasing. In terms of some next steps, we, again, we have been able to now include Wilson in the Collaborative and provide direct services to their students, staff, and their parents. And that's happening through the ELA work, the math work with teachers, and also with family and student and family college readiness activities. In terms of helping students with EPT benchmarks, last year was the first year that Hoover was able to provide the ERWC course, and we're also supporting with tutoring for the EPT and the ELM. This was, is the first year that all of our seniors will be given individual college advising as well. In the past, we focused on the College Avenue Compact eligible students, but we really saw the need to make sure that all seniors were really supported in terms of their post-secondary options and had a plan for life after high school. And then, as we have mentioned earlier, in order to address low math achievement, Chek is now partnering with two professors from SDSU Center for Research in Math and Science Education to better facilitate vertical alignment and the implementation of the Common Core. So at this time, I'd like to introduce, our student's going to do a testimonial. He's a student from Hoover High School and his name is Deshaun Walker.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin and ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Deshaun Walker. I am currently a senior at Hoover High School and my cumulative GPA is 4.04. To tell you a little bit about myself, I was born in San Diego but raised in Las Vegas for part of my life. I have six siblings, one of which has graduated college. I also have a twin brother who will also be attending college in the fall. During my time at Hoover, I have had the privilege to participate in the following five clubs: Hoover Step Team, Cardinals Interact Leadership Program, Black Student Union, Young Life Bible Club, and a prayer group on campus. I am the president of three of those clubs. I serve as the battalion commander for my JRC unit and I am the executive officer for the District Joint JRC Program, commanding a total of 2,600 cadets. In addition, I am the member, I am a member of the Academy of Literature and Media Arts as a drama student. I am also heavily involved in my community in terms of community service and community involvement. Moving back to San Diego and attending Hoover High School, I became very motivated to attend college because I realized that education was going to be the foundation of my success. By attending college, I know that I can and will be a positive role model for my younger siblings and other students that come from similar backgrounds as myself. With this in mind, I was exposed to a wonderful program unique to Hoover called the College Avenue Compact. This program was, has supported me with filling out college applications with events like the College Prep Day, preparing for the California High School Exit Exam, preparing to pass the ELM and EPT college placement tests, and also with one-on-one advising support. I am very proud to say that I have received guaranteed admission to San Diego State University through the College Avenue Compact. I have also been accepted to the following universities: UC Riverside, CSU Cal Poly Pomona, and CSU Fullerton. My ultimate goal is to attend Harvard University to study international business and business management. I have already completed the Harvard admissions interview process and I'm now awaiting a response on their decision in March. My future career goals, my future career goals consist of my commission into the U.S. Army after college graduation as a logistics management officer. I plan to serve my country on active duty for 30 years. After I retire, I plan to go into politics so that I can acquire additional experience that will prepare me to run for president in the year 2052. Once I enter college, I plan to seek similar programs like the College Avenue Compact that will help me make a smooth transition into college. Thank you, Superintendent Martin and ladies and gentlemen of the board, for the opportunity to share my personal story with you tonight. Walker for president in 2052.
Can I just ask you, so it's great that Wilson is now part of the Collaborative, but I know, you know, when Bernie Nguyen was principal there, one of the concerns was that the Wilson students would not be able to participate in the Cardinal Camp because they're on a year-round schedule. Have we kind of figured that one out, how to get Wilson students into the Cardinal Camp?
Actually, both Clark and Wilson are on year-round.
Yeah, right.
And I think maybe the issue was students that were in summer school. And we fixed that with providing transportation and making sure that, obviously, the work that we're doing in Cardinal Camp is aligned with what they're getting even more than in summer school. So we really made sure that, that work was aligned and very rigorous.
Great, terrific.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Sure.
The, and I realize this presentation is an overview, so I'm not expecting you to have all these specific answers and maybe we can, we can get back some more information because this model is an exciting model, which hopefully we can use in other schools throughout the district with other colleges and so forth. But when you talk about the college prep, it was, the pages aren't numbered, but it checks success. And it talks about the percentages of Hoover students who took the PSAT and then 56% of seniors took the SAT and this proceeds, exceeds the district average. I guess it'd be nice to know what the district average is. And if you don't know now...
I don't have it at the top of my head.
I'm not trying to stump you, but I think that would help understand.
Context.
And also, what the specific goals and objectives are. On the next page, in college enrollment, the number of students who are accepted through SDSU through College Avenue Compact has increased each year since its inception, 2011. Well, it'd be nice to know actual numbers. You know, how many were accepted and how many are accepted now would be helpful.
Right.
And what are their specific goals and objectives that we want to reach as part of this compact? And then, of course, the same question, the next one, the number of students is at its highest level in the past six years. Well, once again, the, without any numbers, it's hard to understand, you know, how many students are actually being impacted by this because everything I know the superintendent is going to do as we move ahead is try to see what is the most effective investment of our time, money, resources for the best results. And this is a program that we actually have some data on and starting to, so that would be appreciated as well. And one question, and I don't know if the superintendent knows this, so I don't want to, or maybe you know this as well, the general question on Casey. I was told, and I've learned around here, never accept anything as being fact unless I get it verified, but as far as the Casey goes, now, students, do you know how many times students are allowed to attempt to pass the Casey? And I've been told they can pass it after they graduate or, and come back, or do, does anybody know that?
They, their first try is in 10th grade and we help, really try to, it's coming up already actually next month, we really try to help our students to pass it on the first try. But then they get a chance a few times a year after that. So our juniors just had a chance in November and they're going to have another chance this March if they didn't pass it as sophomores. So they really have, even during senior year, and I believe you're correct, that even afterwards they can do it and they won't be able to graduate, obviously, with their, their high school, but they'll be able to do like the summer graduation with the district.
So for your program, they obviously need to pass as one of the benchmarks before they're accepted.
Right, because they need high school graduation.
Sure, I understand. And, I mean, it's, it's, it's a broader question, but do we know, can students, how many years does a student have to go back to pass a Casey? Does anyone know the answer to that question? After...
Two years.
Two years. So two years after the 10th grade or after the graduate, after 12th grade?
After the 12th grade.
So they, okay. Oh, okay, interesting. It'd be interesting to have data on how many kids do and will come back and to do that. And what is the eligibility index, is that, what is the minimum CSU eligibility index?
That's a combination of GPA and scores that the CSU establishes for a minimum acceptance. So different, so for instance, at SDSU, it's really about 3,400 that they're looking at.
Okay.
But there's other CSUs that maybe aren't as impacted and so they have lower, the minimum isn't 2,900 eligibility index.
And what's the total? What's the highest?
I believe it's over 4,000.
Okay, thank you.
And we did provide the, the full reports and then the summary of the reports. So just to give you a very quick idea of, if you're looking at four-year university numbers or percentage accepted to SDSU, 2012, there was 55 students and then the year after that, in 2013, there were 67 students. And then the previous year, 2012, in terms of College Avenue Compact guaranteed admission students, there were 22 at Hoover. And then last year, there were 38. And that's where we're really pushing towards making sure these students do not need remediation and they can start college fresh and, and ready to go. In terms of College Prep Day, one of our main goals with College Prep Day was obviously to increase college-going culture, but working with students at the middle school level and talking to them about SATs and ACTs is very abstract. So we really wanted to make sure that everyone had a, and our students don't have a lot of experience with timed tests either, so we wanted them, to give them the experience of having a timed test and a practice exam of either the SAT or the SAT. of having a timed test and a practice exam of either the SAT or the ACT. And working, we also work with parents on reviewing what their scores are, and really, we're trying to get them all to participate and then build so that by the time they get to senior year, this is not something new, but it's also something they've had practice and can build confidence on. So we know that those scores are gonna be low in the beginning, but we're also looking at how each individual student can build that confidence. So that, I mean, for instance, for me, the first time I looked at the SAT was when I had to take it, you know? So that's what we're trying to avoid with our students, to give them that exposure and build that confidence.
Okay. I don't know about the rest of you, but I'll be 90, do I have a vote in 2052 for Deshaun, so...
Yes, a big thank you, actually, to Deshaun for his great testimony.
I know Dr. Evans should be older, because he's older than I am, but I think of this... Oh, okay, so I'm gonna...
What's your stand on social security?
Yeah, that's right, yeah, exactly.
Any other, any other board member comments or questions at this time?
I think it's a great program, and if there's anything we could do to have other schools have it too, especially SATs, because, like you, the first time I saw SAT was when I had to actually take it. And if there's that type of preparedness, because for me, I took outside courses, something outside of school, where my parents had to spend a lot of money for me to get prepared for the SAT, because college is really competitive now, and SAT scores mean a lot. So if all schools have this type of program, or don't you think so, Brandon, then I think it'd be great.
I agree. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Yeah, to that point, I just had a meeting yesterday evening with Ted Parsons at Partnership for Children, and they're looking at expanding the partnership, but I think there's some work to be done in that regard first. Yeah. All right, seeing no other board member comments or questions, moving on to item E4, resolution requesting waiver of Education Code Section related to the equity length of time of school day for transitional kindergarten programs. Superintendent Martin?
Thank you, President Beiser. This item is seeking to move forward to adopt a resolution where we will be applying for a waiver to the state of California for the, it has to do with our TK programs. And I said in my budget presentation in January how our closing the achievement gap strategies are going to include a very strong strategy for closing the achievement gap by the end of first grade, and one of the approaches will be expanding our TK programs across the district. And we see that as, we're calling it an academic staircase for our youngest learners. When you put together your preschool programs, your TK programs, and your K programs, what that can look like to have our strategy fully be implemented, we will be, at this point, we're applying for a waiver to the state to make our half-day TK, our TK programs half-day. You need to apply for a waiver, because if your full day, if your kindergarten programs are full day, and you're offering less than that in TK, you need to apply for a waiver. So at this point, it's to move forward. The plans and how to do this, we're still in the engagement process. We're reaching out to our stakeholder groups. We're hearing feedback on what will work, what won't work, how do we establish these TK programs in a way that we communicate well to our communities? Some of the concerns around a half-day program, what will happen the rest of the day? Can we engage our after-school programs? What about transportation? Those are things that we're still working out, but to continue to work out the broad offering of expanding TK, one of our first steps is to apply for this waiver. So this is in no way a finished product tonight. We're not telling the whole product of a half-day TK, but we're starting the first step in needing to apply for the waiver, so that's what we're seeking tonight. There are other districts with half-day TK programs in the county, Poway Unified, Oceanside, Coronado, Encinitas, Chula Vista, San Marcos Vista, Anaheim, Tustin, Irvine, I'm going up northern California now too, but there are many districts that do have half-day. We wouldn't be the only district doing that, just to put that into a context. But the other part of it is, we really believe in having this opportunity and this access to expand the program in a way that gives students the opportunity and access they need at that level. So if you remember, TK is relatively new educational opportunity. It's for students who turn five between September 2nd and December 2nd. And so it's sort of the first of a two-year kindergarten program. We have Terry Walter, our director of teaching and learning here, and the TK team, I see in the back, Donna Marriott, St. Kraft, to answer questions, but really, so far, what we need to do is to move forward is applying for the waiver.
I would second that, based on the idea that this just allows them to move forward.
All right, we have a public speaker on the agenda item, Amy Redding.
I'm here as Chair of the DAC. The TK waiver came before the DAC meeting, the last general meeting, in the month of February. And some of the comments and concerns that came from the general body included that children that are bringing in full ADA should be offered a full-day program. Also, TK at all sites, rather than concentrating, will result in most classrooms being combos of kindergarten and TK. This will be an added burden for teachers that need to teach across an even wider spectrum than they already have to, and potentially, it's a disservice to the kindergartners and the TKs as they aren't given the full attention to their curriculum and developmentally appropriate instruction. There's also a big concern about after-school care, both for families, because the question became, so is the district going to be the one that's going to plan after-school care and provide that, or are parents going to have to find alternatives for this partial day program? And that can be a big burden for family members, because people don't always have access to childcare and have to rely on family members, and sometimes that can get dicey and could end up impacting student attendance. Also, the DAC is a very pragmatic bunch. They like numbers. They like wanting to know how many FTEs this is going to be, whether or not you already have the staff to be able to do this program district-wide, and also the cost of shifting resources. Even if it's a net zero, it's always nice to see exactly how much it's gonna cost and how you're gonna budget for it. And those are just the concerns that came out of that DAC meeting that night.
Did the DAC vote to support or not, or...
We did not, but the consensus was to not support the waiver at the time. I think there needs to be more information given to the DAC, such as a plan of how the curriculum's going to look, and how you're gonna service both populations, after-school concerns, and then, of course, costs.
And so this will be the tricky part about engaging our stakeholder groups at the very beginning of the process. There's been conversations in the past that it's done, deals are already taken to the DAC after it's already, or other employee or stakeholder groups. And to engage early in the process, when we actually are preparing a communication strategy, a frequently asked question strategy, many of the questions that we heard that night allowed us to shape a stronger plan, and it's just part of the process right now. So we actually appreciate the on-the-ground information from the families that this will benefit and what their concerns are, so we can mitigate it as we craft the program, because the overall benefit in terms of the outcome around closing the achievement gap, to have a half-day TK and intervention strategies in place, we believe in, but the technicalities and how much is it gonna cost, and knowing that we're adding this program, it's the ADA that gets generated by these students, but these questions allowed us to stay in the dialogue, and it's not a finished product yet, we're in process, but the waiver allows us to continue to build with these concerns in mind so we can mitigate them.
And when you bring back your specific plan and proposal as part of the budget, would there still be, I assume, you know, it's like if you have X number of dollars that this is going to cost, that there are still options that if the board decided it wanted to concentrate full day in some areas versus other areas? I mean, you know, every family's different, every need is different. When my first daughter started in kindergarten at Doyle, it was the first year of full-day kindergarten. And from a parent at that point, I thought, wow, great, free daycare. And there was free after-school care, which they couldn't even charge. Now, you know, every parent's needs are different, so I guess the question is, are there options if we want to concentrate full day in certain schools versus others, when the staff comes back with all this?
We'll be putting together, we have what the full plan is, and this engagement and input from our stakeholder groups has helped us with that, but we'll present what the plan is. And we understand the childcare issue has been brought up, whether that's a, if it's a, there's some of our preschool programs right now that are half-day academic, and the other half of the day is some type of enrichment program that could be run, we could co-fund something. We'll make sure that we have, we want to present what the options would be. But we do want, we do have a pretty pure model of what we think it will take to deliver on this closing the achievement gap strategy. We'll take feedback if you have another way that you want to do it, though.
Well, I mean, once again, we do concentrate, as we've talked about, you know, dollars in the 29 highest poverty schools for class size. And there's a reason, academic reason for that, and the board supports, has supported that for a number of years, even though I'm not sure any of those schools are in my sub-district. And they may just only be in two districts or three at tops. So the question is, you know, so I guess just when we get down to it, it comes down to, beyond all the logistical issues, which clearly are a lot, you know, where is that need greatest, and is that where we're focusing the money or not? So I think that would be part of the discussion that I'd like to have when we come back, or at least to look at some options, you know, and at that time.
Amy, could you hang out, just in case other board members have a question about the DAC, please? Is that okay?
Of course.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any other board member comments or questions at this time?
Well, just that the reason I'm supporting the approval is just to give the superintendent the flexibility to come back with a plan, and there's no way, I mean, just everybody understands, it's not a commitment on the board's part to any particular half-day or full-day, it's just to have the option open, so that if we discuss it later and we thought she came up with some reasons that might be a good idea, and then it was too late to apply for the waiver, we wouldn't be able to implement. So that's all the action I think we're taking.
Did the, when the DAC discussed the item, did they explore the rationale behind the half-day whereby the teachers, the other half of the day, would be pushed into first grade for literacy intervention supports?
Yes, they did.
Okay. And then, how did they feel about that idea? Was that discussed?
I don't know if anybody brought it up in particular about saying that was super, super great, but nobody else said that it was a horrible idea either. So it's, I mean, it seemed very reasonable.
Was there any conversation at the DAC about using Title I dollars to maybe maintain or to ensure that the 29 highest poverty elementary schools maybe have a full-day TK?
No, there was no financials presented.
Okay, all right. Superintendent Martin, I know that, we know that TK is based in research, and we know that it works, and it helps children close the achievement gap, and that's kind of why we're so excited about taking TK district-wide. Is there any data on the difference between half-day TK and full-day TK that shows anything there?
TK is such a relatively new program, we're not, we can't see that right now. We have observed TK programs, and we're looking at the full-day TK and what we believe is important in terms of an instructional three-and-a-half, four-hour block of time. How much do you want a four-year-old? There's a time in a TK day, if it's a full day, where there's a nap time, and a snack time, and a play time, and you have children, and we are not opposed to that. We think that four-year-olds need that time, but when you talk about a fully certificated teacher, a full day with our four-year-olds, we, the program that we're developing is half-day teaching the TK students, the other half of the day, that certificated teacher could potentially be doing intervention strategies. These are all concepts right now, as I said, there's a lot more stakeholder engagement, employee group engagement, that we still need to do, but moving forward with the waiver, the theory of action is we want to utilize certificated teachers to be able to teach the TK kids developmentally appropriate curriculum, and then intervention strategies for kindergarten and first grade. And when we observe full-day TKs that are already in session right now, a half of the day, there is a nap time and there is a play time, and we want to best utilize our resources.
Okay.
And some of the programs, some of the YMCA programs or some of our nonprofits can do the after-school, after-school of a half-day, the students will be in school all day. In terms of what Mr. Barnett was saying, was, he said, oh, free daycare, there can be a full-day program, but half the day is a TK, the parent still has their child in school the whole day, but half the day is a TK academic part, and half the day could be a program designed with one of our nonprofit groups through our after-school program, and those are all things that we need to continue to shape, so we're presenting a complete package.
Okay, so as I understand it, it's a full day, but it's a half-day in the TK, and then the other half day...
Where are the waivers for the half-day TK? The other half day, we...
Enrichment, after-school program?
We're interested in looking at what the enrichments could look like. We don't have those worked out yet. We do have really strong prime-time programs. We have strong after-school programs already in our district. By expanding this, we want to engage what the options would be, so parents have choices.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and also, I just want to make clear, I mean, that was a, certainly as a parent at that time, my own individual experience, it was, you know, that was the benefit, you know? Obviously, there is, I understand the benefit of having more kids earlier in school longer, and I just want to look at all the various options. Ultimately, you're the superintendent, and you're gonna make the recommendation, what you think is best to meet the academic goals, but I just, this is new, and, you know, the question, and I, believe me, a number of parents in my district have expressed excitement about the half-day TK. And so there is support out there for it, from what I've heard from parents, but at the same time, you know, your goal to close the achievement gap in the early age, and our board's support of that goal is, are we leveraging the resources as effectively as possible? And so that's just, it's not a criticism, it's just that I think we need to have more discussion of the options when we bring it back, and that's all I'm looking for. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor with a second. Any other board member discussion or questions? Okay, please vote. Okay, that passes 5-0. Is there a motion for the board consent agenda?
So moved.
Please vote. That passes unanimously, 5-0. I do want to mention that the school board just approved a proclamation honoring interim Mayor Todd Gloria. Friday, February 28th, 2014, will be Todd Gloria Day in San Diego Unified School District. If you can, please wear purple, that's Todd's favorite color. Onto item G, operational matters reserved for the board, appointment or, and reappointments of representatives to the Prop S and Z Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, ICOC.
Second.
Please vote. Passes unanimously. Item G2, joint San Diego Unified School District and San Diego Community College District Board meeting designated for March 18th as a joint meeting.
Moved to approve.
Please vote. Unanimously, 5-0. Item G3, board member appointment, reappointment to California School Board Association, CSBA Delegate Assembly, and San Diego County School Boards Association, SDC/CSBA. Representatives?
So just, we're appointing one board member tonight for the next, the 2014...
Reappointed.
I'll nominate trustee Barnett.
I think he's already a member.
Yeah, I think the three, there are three people have been members. I have personally not been to one of the local county meetings, just because of conflicts with cluster meetings and all that, so, you know, I think if you want to have several of us be able to go, and, you know, certainly not precluded from attending if you wish to, it's just a matter of being a voting member, I guess. So isn't Mr. Beiser currently a voting member? And you...
Yeah, the current, yeah, the current board members are Vice President Foster, myself, and trustee Barnett.
Right, and the term is expiring Mr. Barnett, and so we would just be approving his renewal.
Yes.
And yes, other people are allowed to attend. And as far as the, my understanding has been all along, I mean, the, it's, first of all, for the state delegate issue, and then secondarily, the county school board membership, and that's, not everybody can attend that all the time.
So this is through how long? So does this mean that you're all endorsing Mr. Beiser and mine's reelection to the board if it's after this? I'm just kidding. Or years of purgatory. Whatever the motion is.
Is there a motion?
The motion by Mr. Berra, I've seconded, is to reappoint Mr.
Okay, please vote. Are you abstaining, trustee Barnett?
Well, that means a yes.
That passes unanimously, 5-0. Item G4, 2014... Item G4, 2014 California School Board Association, CSBA Region 17 Delegate Assembly Election.
Can we write in people?
I agree.
Okay. Please, is there a motion?
What, what, what is, what are we doing, what's the motion? I don't really care.
There are candidates on a ballot that's included in your brown folder. Sometimes in the past, the board has chosen not to elect any of those. It's up to you if you want to. There are more than nine on the ballot, I think there's 11 or 12, but you can vote up to nine.
So, so we have to choose nine, or that's what we have to do somehow collectively?
Are we going to secret ballots?
Nine out of 11.
And the deadline is immediately following your next regular meeting. If you didn't want to do this tonight and carry it over to the next meeting, it would give you a little bit more time.
I can do alphabetical, I can vote for mayor.
The other, the other thing we could do at a meeting would be, if there's one board member who is more particularly informed about this, they could propose who we vote for, and we could approve that. Rather than us just alphabetically doing it.
I, I, how about we delegate it to the president and the vice president of the board to select on our behalf?
Right.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Right, that's a better motion. I have a second.
Okay, please vote. Passes unanimously. Onto item H, District Operations. H4, we already considered that item. H5, Finance Monthly Update Review of December Data Budget Analysis.
No standing president.
Staff is available, are there any questions?
No.
Okay, move on to item H6, Public Hearing and Ratify Adoption of Resolution in the Matter of Intention to Dedicate an Easement and Right-Away to San Diego Gas and Electric on District-Owned Property at the Portion of Hage Elementary School.
Could we see a map of the pipe? Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
And there are no speakers for the public hearing.
Gas line or?
It's a public hearing, open, closed.
Actually, can we find out, is it a power line versus a gas line? I guess...
It's right-of-way to San Diego Gas and Electric.
Yes, that's very helpful, Dr. Evans, Dr. Trustee Evans.
We're moving a transformer about 20 feet. Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you, there's more examples.
Hit, hit a button, trustee, thank you. That passes unanimously, 5-0. Superintendent's Consent Agenda, are there any speakers on any items?
There are not.
Thank you. Does any board member wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Okay, please vote.
Do you want a motion?
Moved to approve, I move to approve.
Okay, thank you, please vote. Eager Beaver, sorry. That motion carries, 5-0. We have, at this point in time, we'd like to have, move to item D1, Administrative Assignments. Superintendent Cindy Martin?
I am very pleased to announce, after a long wait to find the right candidate, the Chief Human Resources Officer for San Diego Unified School District, Tim Esfazador, Executive Director in Human Resources, Acacia Thaidé, and Director in Human Resources, Bernadette Nguyen. Very happy about these announcements tonight, it's been, we're very happy to welcome Tim Esfazador back to San Diego Unified, and we'll continue to look forward to introduce the public to Acacia, who's coming to us from Vista Unified School District.
Is there any additional public testimony on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we are adjourned until the next meeting, Tuesday, March 11th, 2014.
President Visor, are we adjourning back to...
Oh, we need to, we're going to reconvene closed session upstairs.